Good afternoon and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's Cable Cast Post Agenda pertaining to Chief Scorato's return to collegiate basketball refereeing as of Tuesday, October 29th, 2024. For the record, we're joined by Councilman Bobby Wilson, Councilwoman Erica Strasburger, Councilman Bobby Charlin, Council, former Council President Theresa Kiel Smith, Councilwoman Barbara Warwick, and Councilwoman Deborah Gross. And if we would all just take the time, introduce our guests, please.
Jake Paulack, Deputy Mayor and Director of the Office of Management and Budget.
Christopher Ragland, Assistant Chief of the Pittsburgh Bureau of Police.
Lisa Frank, I'm the city's chief operating and administrative officer.
Lee Schmidt, Public Safety Director for the City of Pittsburgh.
Thank you, folks. So here's what I decided to do. We're going to do this in two different sections, okay? The first one is going to be pertaining to Chief Scorato and how we got in this position and why we were without a chief right now. The second one is going to be, we're going to move on from that, I hope, for good. And the second part is going to be referring to what direction we're going to go into. And I would probably like to hear from you, Chief Ragland, at that point, as to your vision and things like that. So, and I want to also welcome Councilman Kahari Mosley, I see coming in. Thank you, Kahari. So, all right. So I want to start the meeting like this, okay? The numbers of the police force are always important to me, and I just feel an obligation to throw out where exactly we are in staffing levels, right? In 2023, I had a post-agenda about policing in Pittsburgh. At the time, we had 768 able-bodied police officers that we could put on the street. Now, that doesn't count chiefs, and that doesn't count commanders, and that doesn't count anybody out on various leaves, all right? So, we had 768 at the time. I projected in January 25, we would have 664 able-bodies. And the union just told me yesterday, we have actually 654 able-bodied police officers that we can put out there on the street, again, excluding chiefs, command staff, and folks on leave. So, and that's kind of really the premise as to what I wanted to talk about as far as Chief Scorato and his departure from us and entertaining even a part-time job. You know, we have many other issues other than murder in this city. And as last I looked, I think we're going to have more murders this year than we had last year. So, I understand we've had a great deal of success in that area, which I'm happy and I applaud. But we have other areas that the police chief can focus on full-time, and that's what I expect out of our police chief. So, so I'm not going to waste much time. I'm going to get right into questions from council members. But before we do that, there are two pertinent things that I felt were important, for me at least, as a council member, when we voted for Chief Scorato to be our next police chief. And these things arose, you know, unbeknownst to me, I would say. So, and I would like to start just by asking you all to answer this question for me, okay? First thing is, the company who did our audit, or I'm sorry, the company who did our search for the chief, we spent $80,000 for their services. That company came back with a report, you know, I didn't really get to see it in print, but interestingly enough, I understand that there was an audit done in Fort Lauderdale over Chief Scorato and as to him working on city-time refereeing games. My question to you all is this: Were you aware of that from the consulting group, the public septor search from California? Were you aware of that before Chief Scorato came to our table?
That there was an audit conducted?
That there was an audit conducted of Chief Scorato while he was working for Fort Lauderdale.
Yes.
You were aware of that?
Yes, we were aware that there was an audit conducted of those allegations, and also that it came back unfounded, that there were, the conclusion of the audit was that there was, were no sustained concerns about him refereeing basketball games on city-time or Fort Lauderdale time.
Okay, Chief Ragland, were you aware of that?
Of the report?
Yes.
I didn't see any written report of that process. I know what I saw in the news prior to him becoming chief of police. So I think I did see that in one of the Google searches.
Got it. Did you have conversations with leadership here about it?
No.
Okay. Chief Frank?
Yeah, same as Deputy Chief Paulack.
Thank you. Director Schmidt?
Yes, we were aware of the audit. That was even in the local news prior to his appointment.
Right.
And I think there was discussion, there wouldn't have been discussion with Chief Ragland because he was also a candidate on the list.
All right. So my point is this, right? The search firm that we hired out of California, this was in their report. And then it's to come to council to agree to the salary and everything that goes with the new chief. Why was that not presented or conveyed to council?
Again, the finding of the audit was that the concerns that were raised were not sustained. So the conclusion of the audit was that that was, that that did not, in fact, though it was alleged by some individuals there, that it did not happen, that's first. Second, as Director Schmidt noted, it was reported on here by local media in the run-up to the, you know, between the announcement of his nomination and his confirmation. I don't believe it was...
Yeah, I understand that. But my question, and it's not even a question, I just wanted to confirm you all knew about it. Council, I can't speak for other members, but I knew nothing about that. And if they're giving it to you as their report, as their findings, I would think it was a responsibility to pass that on to council because we have to decide whether we, you know, give them a salary or not, right?
Maybe it's worth noting a couple of things. When it's, to describe it as a finding, I think suggests that it was the, their analysis was, you know, an audit or a background check on the candidates. It was a feature of their, the information that they provided to all of us on every candidate who was considered, what are relevant sort of news stories that they've been involved in in their current positions or former positions anywhere else they're serving.
Okay. I read the audit, you know, it seems to me, I know it was never submitted formally, I know it was never part of the public process in Fort Lauderdale. For me, I felt that should have been shared with this council before we interviewed them. They give you the information and you should pass it on to us, I just thought. So you, you kind of weeded it out for us and decided it wasn't important and not to tell council, basically.
We didn't provide any of the information from their research as part of the nomination.
Okay. Before I get into questions from council, the other question that's pertinent to my decision-making at least is, did any of you know about the arrangement that the mayor and Chief Scorato had made as to that we would revisit this at some point and talk about his refereeing? Did you know of that before we hired him?
Yes.
You did. Chief Ragland?
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Yet, nobody informed council?
Again, I, that's correct.
Hi, my Chief of Staff Blake, I know you're watching. I want you to just watch a clip, okay, that I pulled from that interview. Just take a minute, and then we're going to get right into questions from council, okay?
So, you know, there's one thing we didn't touch on, and I felt was important for the public to know and for you to just express, was I have other professional experiences, NCAA men's basketball referee. Now, let me just explain to the public or anybody who cares, not just, this is not high school, this is, could be a real profession, and it is a real profession. You made probably a decent paycheck doing that. And when you, when I see you're, you know, in a Final Four game, that could lead into the NBA, that could lead into other things. So I think it's important, number one. I know, and I just wanted you to express to people, I know that you have committed to not pursue that profession while you're here as a Pittsburgh police chief, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So, and you...
Did he lie to us?
I can't answer that question for him.
He can't answer it either because he's not here, but, but, so you all were under the understanding that he may entertain going back to refereeing and supported that?
Who's he in that question?
Chief Scorato.
I was aware that he committed not to pursue refereeing during the first year of his employment as chief, and that the mayor agreed to revisit that question with him after that year.
Anybody else want to comment? Surely, did you know that he committed to us, that he was going to be a full-time chief and wasn't going to entertain as we just watched?
Yeah, I, I will probably, not for the last time today, dispute the idea that to engage in other activities in his own time makes him anything less than, would have made him anything less than a full-time chief. The agreement that we reached earlier this year and that was disclosed publicly was that he would be permitted by us to utilize his own vacation time, past time, days off, to pursue that other interest of his.
Okay.
And there was at no point any discussion, agreement, understanding that he would be released from his duties or allowed to use time where he otherwise would be on the clock or he had not otherwise earned as time off to do that. So the notion that anything short of full-time work was expected of him is incorrect. And ultimately, the reason why the administration determined that if that, if it was his choice to utilize his own time in that way, that, you know, we weren't going to stand in the way of that.
Okay. Okay, so before we start questions, and I'm going to start with Councilman Wilson because I know he has a little bit of time constraint. But I wanted the council to know, first of all, that information. Secondly, I want to know, I want council and everybody to know the financial impact of this, right? So we spent $80,000 for the search committee. We bumped his raise up to $40,000 raise, so he, that's 18 months, that's $60,000 that we paid this chief compared to Chief Schubert. But most importantly, it's the pension, of course, right? Pension, when Chief Scorato left in 2018, he was earning a little over $100,000 a year, 50% is his pension, that would have, zeroed out to around $50,000 a year for his pension. As it is now, because he's worked here for the last year and a half, he's making $185,000, I believe, somewhere in that ballpark. And that pension change is from $50,000 a year of his, because of his year and a half served here as chief, to now $92,500 a year. If, God willing, Chief Scorato loses average life expectancy, it's well over $1 million in our pension fund that's going to be paid to a chief that's been a year and a half here. And I will tell you this, many people have said to me, "I told you, he was going to do that." Many people suspected that he was there to inflate his pension. Did any of you feel that way? No, right?
No, absolutely not.
Okay. I didn't either, to be honest with you. So, so the financial impact goes from the $80,000, the raise in the salary, the pension, you know, it's cost us millions of dollars to hire a chief for a year and a half, so. Okay, with that, let me open it up for questions from council. It's really council, I want to be well-informed, I want them to make sure they ask every question they can. And again, we're going to go through the Scorato thing, and we're going to make sure we get all our questions answered, and then we're going to talk about moving forward, okay? All right. Councilman Wilson, you have the floor.
All right, thank you, Councilman. And I appreciate you letting me go first because I have to get to a ribbon-cutting. Unfortunately, this is unfortunate that we have to make this transition here, but looking forward to going to cut the ribbon at Rury Park here soon, or, you know, at least announce and go through the details of investing more funds in that park. So I just wanted to follow up on some of the questions as I was listening, just trying to understand more. Because I don't, you know, obviously, when you made, let me just back up here, when you made the motion to have this post-agenda, this was previous to the news of, you know, Chief Scorato leaving. So events have changed, and we definitely have to talk about what the future looks like. But there is a lot to learn here, especially prior for us to understand, you know, moving forward, what the next steps would look like. So I just want to ask some basic questions on this employment that is still current, right? The last day for Chief Scorato would be?
Friday.
Friday. All right. So mention that there was, and everyone, I think three of the four mentioned that you did, you were, you were aware of, that there would be a possibility that he would go back to reffing.
There was an understanding we could revisit that question, yeah.
How did that come to place? Like, how do you have an understanding? Is there a contract in place?
No. Chief Scorato nor any other city employee has an employment contract. So there were, there's no contract, no written or binding agreement?
No written? This isn't written down somewhere that, there's no binding that we would revisit this?
In, in his final conversations with the mayor in, prior to, you know, agreeing to accept the position and the mayor, you know, deciding to nominate him, this, of course, was something they discussed, and that is an agreement they reached that he would commit not to...
Agreement, like just a conversation?
Correct.
And then, how did that play out? Like, then the mayor brought, were you present for the conversation, or did you, were you brought in later?
I honestly don't recall if I was there or not. I was, I was personally there for some of their conversations at that time, and some of them were one-on-one. I don't recall specifically if I was there in that conversation.
Okay. So that's helpful. So there's no written contract?
Nor is there for any other city employee.
Good to know. So then, do you think that was relevant information to, like, I mean, both, both the mayor and the chief were in my office and gave the same answer? That's why I didn't think I needed to ask that at the table. But do you think that was relevant? Or how are you viewing this situation since you all thought that could be something that could be revisited, that meaning him going back to reffing? Like, how were you all conceptualizing what would play out here?
I, I think that the, we anticipated addressing that question a year or further on based on a clear understanding of the situation at that time, right? The rationale behind, you know, establishing that we would revisit the question was that we wouldn't and couldn't know what the considerations would be a year later or a year after that or at some point in the future. So my conception of it was that we have a commitment from, again, a verbal commitment from the chief, that he's not going to pursue this for the next year. That will be an important test of, you know, the types of change and leadership he'll present, and then we'll be in a different place when we're another, a year from now that can determine how we move forward. That's how I thought of that understanding at the time.
So some of my information comes from soundbites from, from recent news, and sometimes the news, I know this may come as a surprise to everyone, but the news doesn't share all the clips of what people say, so I'm just trying to work through what I've heard. And one, one of them was that they have, they asked, I believe they asked the mayor about the homicide rate?
Mm-hmm.
And there was some reference to like, well, if the homicide rate came down, then we would revisit that conversation. What is the reality of that?
It's a, an oversimplification, right? I mean, I, there was no specific trigger or, you know, if this happens, then this happens, understanding. Though I believe that in the clip you're referring to, the mayor cited the homicide rate as one of the factors that went into his decision when the chief raised this topic again this year was something that he took into account in considering whether he would explore this. So there was no direct linkage, I think. The decision to consider and then ultimately be supportive of this move came from a broader array of positive developments within public safety and the police bureau specifically, but not solely or exclusively the homicide rate.
So were there meetings that occurred where the mayor, the chief, maybe you all were involved too? I'm speculating, like, that there will be, you would look at the variables and say, well, then, you know, it's possible you could go back to...
No.
You know, to the previous arrangement that you had at the prior department, meaning like, you know, going to, you know, referee?
If you mean in the course...
Division One college games?
If you mean in the course of the last year and a half?
Yeah, like, where are their meetings saying like, okay, well, we're making, we're meeting our marks here, so it looks like we can have that conversation in two months.
No, it was, the, the course of events where, you know, the chief was nominated, confirmed, assumed the other responsibilities of the job, served for more than a year, and then made us aware of his desire to revisit the conversation in light of an offer he had received to rev for the Big Ten. And it was at that point that we began discussing whether that was something that we found reasonable or something that was, you know, worthy of discussion.
Okay. I want to go to the time off. I know we had discussed in a recent leadership meeting, the question came up on how much time off does the chief have? And so that's relevant even when we look into the future here, because, and I'll let you all answer the question, which is, because I want to focus on that for a second. How much time does Chief Scorato have off every year on an annual basis? Personal, personal time and vacation?
Yeah, I believe it's around approximately nine weeks annually, plus comp time, that develops pretty quickly for most chiefs and directors.
So most directors and chiefs, even like the fire chief, they have off two months out of the year? Or they have the ability to take off?
It depends on the longevity, so we all have to remember Chief Scorato was here for 23 years prior to him coming here.
Yeah, that's an important distinction.
Yeah, and that carries over into when he's the, the chief of police?
Any employee that returns, as long as they bridge their time, they also get their seniority.
Is that, was that the case with the prior chief as well?
Well, so chief, yes, so Chief Scorato, Chief Schubert were both long-tenured police officers in the city of Pittsburgh who had, you know, over 20 years of service. And that's important when it, when you look at the question of accrual of time, that is based on longevity, right? So when, when Director Schmidt mentioned directors, you know, directors are not as frequently, you know, 20-year city employees, nor are they all governed by the same rules that police officers are. So I just want to make that distinction clear. When he was referring to directors, he was talking about the accrual of comp time. Yes, Chief Scorato, when he returned, was reinstated as an officer, meaning that his prior years of service were counted towards his...
Is that typical?
Yes. That would be typical for someone who leaves the bureau, serves somewhere else, and then returns to the bureau.
And Chief Schubert was the same?
I don't believe Chief Schubert ever left, so there wasn't the question of reinstatement, but he was...
I mean, the same, the way they calculated...
That's correct.
Vacation and everything. He had approximately the same amount of time if he was here.
Give or take a few years, yes, but he was also a multi-decade police officer, and so would have accrued, did accrue, I'm sorry, did accrue time in a similar fashion.
Okay, I've already taken up a lot of time, I have to, I have to leave, unfortunately. I'm here to listen to more of this, but I just wanted to lightly touch on how we move on from this. So what is, what will be the next steps? Unless you can cut me off, because I know you have questions about this.
You mean, as far as...
And I can listen later.
Where do we go from here?
Imagine, imagine, everyone's going to have the same questions, and I can listen to it, so I can, I can be done. But you're, you're going to touch on where we're going through here. Everyone's going to talk about, okay? Because I realize everyone has probably similar questions, so. All right. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, thank you, Councilman Wilson, I appreciate it.
Sorry, I have to leave.
Appreciate your questions. I, if, if council doesn't mind, I'd like to jump around. I know Councilwoman Kiel Smith has questions, and I know you have some time constraints as well. And if anybody else has time constraints, has questions, please just let me know, and we'll juggle ahead of you.
That's okay. Go wherever you want.
Okay. Then we'll just go right down the line, and if, Councilman Mosley, if you have any question? Okay.
Let me go.
Whoever's ready.
Is anybody else ready?
Go ahead, Councilwoman Kiel Smith, please.
Okay. First of all, can we have the FOP president, he's at the, in the audience, could he also come to the table?
Mr. Schwartzwelder? Yes, come on.
Yes. And I just want to say that I think that this is like such a serious issue on top of some of the zoning things that came out in the public this week, and just some other things. I think the public wants to know answers to a lot of things now. But I will say that I also think it's really odd that we're having a conversation about two people who are not at the table, and four of you are here to speak for those two people. And I really wish that those people who had that agreement came to this table. And I know that Councilman Colko mentioned, one of them at least was not invited, so I don't want to say any more than that, but I, I feel like it's putting you all in a situation to answer to us for something that maybe you weren't even part of the conversation. But I just want to ask you, first of all, what is your understanding about the amount of time that the chief returned on, having off? And do any of your other officers have that same privilege?
So I think what, what the mayor's office was alluding to and the director is a contractual benefit that's covered under our CBA, so we have to collectively bargain.
Oh, I'm sorry. Introduce yourself to the public. Thank you, Councilwoman Warwick, for reminding me.
Robert Schwartzwelder, S-W-A-R-T-Z-W-E-L-D-E-R. I am the current president of Fraternal Order Police for Pitt Lodge Number One.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So what they're citing to, I believe to council, is they're citing from our collective bargaining agreement. Now, I've had this...
Is the chief covered under that?
No. So the collective bargaining agreement covers everyone from a, a non-provocationary police officer. Probationary police officers are those officers that have not completed their one year of service beyond the police academy. We have some limited coverage for them. It's limited in the CBA, but it's extremely limited. We do not cover anyone above the rank of lieutenant. So once someone steps into the rank of commander and above, they become at-will employees, they are subject to council and the mayor's office of how they're paid, how their benefits are determined, et cetera. So they're free to expand those benefits, deny those benefits, and I'm really hoping that this council points out what his contract says, because then that would give me some opportunity to bargain for some of those things come next year. So whatever council can figure out, I'd appreciate it.
I think council, council's going to have to...
I'm not making, making light of that, I'm just saying that the chief and the command staff are not covered by our CBA.
Okay.
So you'd have to ask the mayor and, and the public safety director.
So I will, I will do that. And then, did you want to say something? I saw you were...
I, I agree with what Officer Schwartzwelder said, that the commanders, assistant chiefs and chief are not covered by the CBA. He alluded to the chief having a contract. I just want to stress again that none of those individuals in the command staff have an employment contract or a contract of any kind on an individual basis. There, there is no contract governing the commanders or the chiefs.
So I want to say, there's a couple of things that I need, I want to make sure that I say, and then with the second round when we come back, talking about moving forward, I have a lot more to add to that part. But for this part right now, I want to point out that we had a consultant at $80,000, as Councilman Colko mentioned, and they came up with the top candidates, and the, the top three candidates all had issues. I mean, whether you want to say that they did or didn't, they all had some kind of issues and some kind of concerns. And from the very beginning, I think this, this process was flawed. Who all served on the committee? You had a, a committee that, that did some of the review. Who all, do you have the list of those people who served?
Why don't we start with the mayor's team?
You mean the search committee?
The search committee.
I would have to dig it up to make sure that I remembered everybody, but we had Chief Holmes, Aaron Dalton, Michelle McMurray from the Pittsburgh Foundation, David Harris, University of Pittsburgh Law Professor, Miracle Jones from One Hood...
Zina Scott.
Zina Scott, and from the Public Safety Council, thank you. Zone Five, and, yeah, and Liz, right, from the Zone Three Public Safety Council.
Was there anyone from city council on the committee?
Well...
Council members were invited to have the council president at the time, you...
I remember me, I denied...
Councilman Lavelle and the Public Safety Chair joined for the interviews. You declined for any council members to participate.
Right. Because I didn't feel the process was, was accurate then, and I don't feel like it was, I definitely now don't feel like it was. So at the time, I had concerns then, and I have even more concerns now. And, and I want to say that I think that out of the three top candidates that we heard from, I will, I will be the first to say that I did not have concerns with Chief Scorato at the time because I worked with him and... I worked with him in a different zone, and were in a different position, in a different way. But since then, there's been so many things that have been coming out, and, and it's really concerning that, that he left and that there was a conversation that none of you were a part of that allowed him to do some things that, you know, that are concerning. But you also mentioned that there was an audit done in, uh, Florida, I think it was Fort Lauderdale. And that auditor was fired, so before they had a chance to really say anything, whether it was thrown out or not, he was, he was relieved of, of his duties at the time, or he was fired. And the chief had resigned at the time, and then came here to Pittsburgh, I believe. But, so there, so to say that there was no findings or, or nothing was found, that's what I was told too, I believe. But there, so that's actually not even accurate in itself. And now it's my understanding that the, there's also now something in place that if you lie as an officer or as a, uh, a police officer, you're fired. Is that correct?
Are you directing that to me?
I'm directing it to you.
So under our matrix, I mean, if the city is going to utilize our matrix or use our contract to determine city benefits for command staff personnel, they should be subject to the same disciplinary matrix and terminable offenses that we are. And if you lie, that is an automatic terminable offense, automatic.
Automatic.
Automatic, and, and remember, command staff.
They don't get to resign.
Right, command staff doesn't have the ability to arbitrate a, a disciplinary decision because they're at-will employees.
So I just want to know, I want you to, since this all happened, we have received, I know all of us have been receiving tons of phone calls, tons of comments, a lot of pushback from the public. And when it first happened, I called my son, who's a police officer in another state. And I said, what do you think about, he goes, he's using his own time, I don't see what the issue is. And then later, as I started hearing from the public, you know, and started hearing how much time, then it became a really big issue. And so he only, you know, mentioned that on, on what the information he had, what I shared with him. And so I think it depends on, on all these other details that are, that are really factoring into what's making everyone so angry about some of this. Who made the decision not to tell council about his, uh, agreement to return to basketball? And, and do you know when exactly he started? Because I'm, my concern is, has he been doing this all along? And we just found out because of the media, and somebody shared it. So I'm just, I'm wondering, has this, how long has this been going on? Do you know how long? And when did they have that initial conversation?
To take the second question first.
I hate to even ask you all the questions, I feel like you take all the.
I, to, to take the second question first, um, the first game that he refereed was one that was reported on. It was, uh, uh, I'm gonna, I might use the wrong word, preseason or scrimmage game. Um, I believe it was at the University of Michigan in, earlier this month, uh, the, the weekend before this story, um, broke. We had been planning to announce or publicly disclose this fact the following, the Tuesday after the story broke. So, um, the, the media, uh, coverage of that came preempted that planned announcement. That was the only game since he, uh, took the position that he reffed, and that was after we had been discussing the matter. And the, had, had agreed to allow him to use his time in that way, uh, his, his own personal time.
Who made the decision not to tell council?
Yeah, I, I, I don't, I honestly wouldn't say that there was a conscious decision made not to tell council. Uh, no decis- because no decision was made on the question. The, the determination was to revisit the question at a future date. I don't know if anyone else wants, that, that's, that's my, that's my understanding of what transpired.
Acting Chief Ragland, what's your role with OMI?
I have detectives and a sergeant that are detailed to OMI, but OMI is a separate entity, um, separate than the police bureau.
Do you have the ultimate say in what happens there?
I do not.
Do they come to you?
I do not.
What happens there?
I do not. That, what, what happens is, is when a complaint comes in, OMI investigates, investigates that complaint. Uh, they do a report, they send it to, uh, the police bureau, it comes through my office. I send it to the officers, commanding officer, to kind of review that complaint, uh, see if they agree with the, uh, way the investigation is done and the findings, and then make a recommendation if necessary with respect to that complaint.
So I'm curious how this, this even, this part about the chief lying to the council and to the public mostly is what I'm worried about. How does that, does that come before OMI? How would that, how would that come before you?
Someone would have to file a complaint.
Somebody has to file a complaint. So if anybody, any resident, anyone can file a complaint?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, and then your actions would be what then, do you know? Could you share with, tell me, I want the public to know the process.
So the process would be, somebody would file a complaint with OMI. Director Bruni would, uh, either investigate that herself or assign someone to investigate that, uh, complaint. Once they had the findings, they would issue a report. That report would come to the Assistant Chief of Professional Standards, which is currently me. Uh, I would review that complaint, sending out, send it out to, uh, you know, in, this is when it's a police officer, I send it to the, uh, officer who's command, I send it to the commander who, where the officer works. And so they would review that complaint, either agree or disagree with the findings, and then they can make a recommendation with respect to that complaint. So there's a number of different, like, you know, kind of, um, categories when those complaints come in. So, you know, they can be unfounded, they can be not resolved, and they can be exonerated, and they can be sustained. And so, um, you know, they kind of review those reports and then make a recommendation.
So what concerns me is then, if it, this comes to, he was your chief. You know, I mean, how, how are you?
If I could just add, so in a, instance of a complaint against the chief, that would not go to the bureau. That would come to me as the Director of Public Safety, because I'm the chief's immediate supervisor.
Yeah.
So then I would make the determination correct, and we would make the determination to proceed with disciplinary charges if that was deemed appropriate.
But you answered, respond to the mayor who made this agreement. So I'm just wondering where the public has some kind of recourse? Or where, where do they have their, the conf- how are we building the confidence in the public that we're going to handle this right? That's, that's what I'm trying to understand. Where's, where are the checks and balances on this end?
Well, I think as director, and you and I have had this discussion, I do report directly to the mayor, but council also has the ability to remove me from my position if they feel I'm not doing it appropriately. So although.
Five members.
On a daily basis, right. So I do have to be confirmed by council, et cetera. So I, I think there's a difference there between, you know, that going directly to people. So there's, are checks and balances within our system of government that I'm confident in. As far as the chief goes, and although the president has stepped out, and you'd made a comment earlier about officers not being able to resign, there have been many times where officers are brought on disciplinary charges and they choose to resign prior to a final discipline, decision being made. That is an option, and I, I think President Schwartzwalder will agree to that.
Okay, so I have some more questions, but I know members are eager to get to this, so I'll, um, I'll yield to the, my, my colleagues, and I'll probably, I'll come back around when it's the second phase. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Kiel Smith.
I know this is not easy, thank you for being here.
Right, right, right. Uh, next I'd like to go, Councilman Charlin.
Thank you, Councilman, uh, appreciate this, appreciate all your time for being here today. We're learning a lot about this in the media, um, you know. I, I believe actually we've not been informed yet that the chief is stepping down. I believe that the only notification that we have of that right now is, um, from, reporting from our, our media partners, and I, I want to thank them for their hard work and their diligence on this story. Do you plan to intend, do you, sorry, do you intend to tell council that the chief is stepping down, or are we going to be informed of that in any way?
So I will say, I did, on Friday, once I got the notice, I did notify Councilman Coghill that chief has been terminated, as Councilman Coghill is the Public Safety Chair, or not, has been terminated, has resigned his employment from the city. That email then shortly followed the email this chief sent to the entire bureau, which then quickly went to the media. So it all happened very quickly, but I did notify the office.
So, okay, so Councilman Coghill was notified? Okay, I appreciate that, uh, again.
I'll preface that with saying I'd already known, because the email was out and, you know, cats out of the bag, but go ahead.
Um, but also in the same vein, um, we have, learning about his refereeing is also something that we learned about from the media, not something that we had a discussion with you about, not something that you came to us to te- tell us. Do you feel that it's important to let council know when something like that is happening?
Yes, the, the media reported on the story about five days prior to our intended announcement of it. So, um, we had planned both a public announcement and to inform council members, but those plans were for dates after, dates that occurred after the media story broke prior to our intended release of the information.
I don't have a lot of confidence that was actually the plan. I'm, I'm going to be honest with you, you know, I.
I, I understand, but I'm, I'm, I understand that, that you may not believe that, and, and that's obviously your prerogative. I'm, I'm sharing what our plan was and how it was preempted by the coverage that prevented us from executing on it.
So we're also learning, um, a lot more from the media here. Um, the mayor spoke to a program that was going to take kids, um, to watch refereeing. Is that, where are we in the, the plans for, for that program?
So I, 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 I did not hear the mayor say that. I believe what he is referencing is a program that was going to be funded by the Here Foundation, uh, ref and rooks. Um, and that's what, uh, you know, chief is part of, uh, the Here Foundation Board. And that, I believe that's what was being referenced.
That, that's correct. Chief Scrotto had long planned to, um, combine his, uh, experience with and love of refereeing, um, with youth development for kids who are interested in pursuing a career in policing. And, um, for the ways in which those two efforts or those two desires could be, you know, combined in the form of mentorship. I don't know his plans at this point to continue that effort, given his departure from the bureau. It was, it was connected to his service on the Here Foundation Board, his service as our chief, and as someone with a passion for refereeing.
No, I, 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 we did receive the grant, so, you know, on our kind of list of, of, uh, pieces to sort of pick up and, and figure out going forward, that's certainly one of the things that is there, is the, uh, grant that we received and how to, and it is, you know, it is apart from anything else, I think, a really good idea. The research supports the idea that, you know, um, uh, roughing is good for your cerebral cortex or whatever. It helps people learn to calm down. We've already, I think, recruited one officer out of even just the very initial effort. So I think, you know, we'd like to find a way to carry it forward if we can, but we don't have any specific plans at the moment.
So, sorry, we're going to train officers to become referees, is that what you're saying?
No, we're, uh, we're going to, young, young people is just, uh, think of it as a, as a slight expansion of the sports that we already do with young people as a way to do violence prevention, as a way to enrich people's education and all of that. That one component of that, and one that might even have a, a kind of, um, financial future for young people. Maybe they're not going to be the best basketball star in the world, but they could be a good ref. As, as was actually the, the case for Chief Scrotto. That was, I think, one of his first paid forms of employment and, uh, helped him sort of get a step up in life. Not training officers to be refs.
Okay, so we're going to select kids from Pittsburgh and teach them, that, that is still something that we are going to do? And the Here Foundation is going to be paying for that?
I, I, I mean, I'd like to figure that out, we're kind of mid-process there, and I, it, it seems to me that it's still a, a good idea.
Yeah, I, we haven't seen the grant yet, it hasn't come our way. So, uh, interesting to learn that that's something we're, we're looking to do here. One thing I do want to talk about is the, uh, crime statistics. So I know that the, um, mayor talked about the murder rate. It'd been very important to the mayor that he mentions the murder rate, the murder rate going down. I believe that we are on track to have more murders this year than last year. That, anyone can, anyone verify that?
No, as of today, our, uh, our homicides are at 39, year-to-date, last year was 45. Year-to-date, in 2022 was 59.
Okay.
So at this point, we're
So we're, we're.
13% below where we were.
Six murders away. Yeah.
I mean, yeah, 13%. We don't, luckily, we don't have a extremely high homicide rate in our city compared to some other large cities, but. Yeah, it is six away, you're right.
And that is, uh, you know, uh, it is commendable that that's happening. I do notice that the language that is coming out of the mayor's office is no longer about the murder rate, but it's now about the two-year murder rate. And it's something that I've seen the mayor mention a couple of times here. Is that, uh, can anyone for Public Safety say, is that a usual metric that we use, a two-year murder rate? Or is that just something that we've come up with?
I mean, we look at homicides year over year for multiple years, not just one. Um, but not, also not just two, I would say probably five is kind of where we tend to focus, um, but it ebbs and flows. As far as the two-year, I don't know if that could be coming from, since the chief started, you know, he started prior to 2022 and started in 23, so.
Okay, um, so of another question here, the decision to hire the chief, um, and frankly, I, I want to be clear, I have had a very good relationship with the chief. I think the chief has done, um, very good things for me in, uh, in my district. And I really appreciate the work and his willingness to always pick up a phone call and, um, that, you know, really want to commend that. But ultimately, it looks like the chief was able to pull a fast one on the city here. And I'm curious from folks in the mayor's office or the expanded mayor's office, do we now regret that decision to bring him on?
I don't. Um, I think he did a fantastic job as chief of police. Um, for all of the reasons you just mentioned, Councilman, and for, for many others. I think the city and the bureau benefited from his leadership, um, from the energy that he brought to recruitment, to modernizing and transforming practices, um, to implementing changes that were, uh, included in the most recent collective bargaining agreement, which was reached before he assumed the position, but he played an important role in implementing. Um, and like the mayor, I was comfortable with him continuing to serve as chief while refereeing on his own time, and I wish that that had been allowed to occur. His decision to retire was his own, and I, I find it unfortunate. But I, I would have, um, I would have been very happy, speaking for myself, uh, with him remaining in that position for, for, um, a long time to come.
I, I would say the same thing, and I, and I think it was, um, uh, he was a good chief, I mean, and it was part of why we thought, well, okay, he's got time stacked up. Lots of different people do lots of different things with their time, and, and the chief had done other things with his time. He had been to Italy, or he had been to places where he had been. And, and so, you know, the, the question came up, you know, would, okay, so, uh, would we talk about it? I don't think we would have talked about it, but for the fact that we thought he was a very, very good chief who had some time stacked up. And, and, and that was really at the root of, um, you know, thinking, all right, is this an arrangement that, that would work? Because I agree with you, I think he was a fantastic chief, and I, and I do, you know, I'm sorry that he's not here.
But, you know, uh, to borrow Mike Tomlinism, the best ability is availability. And the, we are going to have probably what, and I assume we'll get to that, for the four years of the, the, you know, four and, and plus years of the Gane administration, we will have had a police chief for 18 months of that. So do we regret that decision? I mean, do, we'd rather have, have acting chiefs, we, we're, we're good with that?
So just first on the accounting perspective, um, Chief Schubert was chief for six months at the beginning of administration. But I, I, again, I would, I would, I understand your point, I acknowledge your point. I don't view it that way, right? Deputy, uh, Chief Stan Grecky was also a very capable and, um, um, good chief for the time that he served in an acting capacity during the prior search. I, I can speak for myself and the mayor, and I think everyone else here, um, in expressing our confidence in, uh, Acting Chief Ragland for the forthcoming, the forthcoming period. Um, so I, I, I don't believe it, I don't view us as not having a chief. Um, so I I I don't believe it, I don't view us as not having a chief in those interim periods. And I think the leadership of the Bureau consistently across that period has been um very positive. To your question about regret, and once again, I do regret his decision to retire, but I I don't view that as the, um, I don't, I don't view us as being in a, you know, weaker position in terms of the overall leadership of the Bureau at this time or in the previous period when we were between permanent chiefs.
Um, okay, uh, I do wanna mention also, sa- you know, I think the term of secondary employment is gonna become very important for all of us over the next couple of months, something that we're gonna talk about a lot. Uh, do any of you have secondary employment? Is that something that we, wh- where in the administration do we say with secondary employment is acceptable and where it's not?
I'll start with by say, to answer your question directly, I do not. Um, as a matter of HR rules or 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 um policy, any city employee is um, with the exception of contact police officers in the uh collective bargaining unit for whom there are specific rules for how they engage in secondary police employment, so that's a, that's a unique case. Any city employee is permitted to um have additional employment outside of their work for the city, provided that it is not occurring on city time. There are innumerable city employees who may have a second job as running their own business on the weekends or things of that nature. It is, it is common in our profession, as in many others. Um, you know, Councilman Cogel, I hope you don't mind me pointing out your your career as a roofer, which preceded your service on council, but that you continue today. That 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 is equally true in DPW in some positions and in many other places. Police officers are obviously governed by the secondary employment rules, where we manage how they are hired out when they are providing police or police-like functions, because obviously the the nature of that work is unique. Um, but a police officer who had a second job as a plumber could do that of their own volition on their own time. Um, and it's not uncommon for city employees to engage in that.
Uh, so one thing that is different between Councilman Cogel and the, you know, uh, hypothetical example of a officer who is a plumber on their own time is that Councilman Cogel has to file ethics disclosures, explaining what uh what his income is from the roofing business, and our chief does not? Am I correct on that?
No, the chief is required to.
Okay.
All director and cabinet-level positions in the city do, all command-level and within the police bureau have to.
And and so many others beyond that, just to start, just to add, all all employees of the mayor's office, regardless of their um rank, if you will, within within the office, all employees within the Office of Management and Budget, um, other folks with discretionary decision-making authority in other departments, whether they have the title of director or deputy director or something else. Um, the the determination of who is to file is um, you know, all mating in consultation ultimately with the ethics um, uh, the ethics office, um, in determining who is required to file. But a large number of city employees outside of council or elected officials file ethics hearing report, uh, ethics uh statements of financial interest with the Ethics Board.
Yeah, and those, all of those are publicly available for the state, correct? Or through the state, correct?
They're filed with the Ethics, uh, the the filings of elected officials, I believe, are available through the state. The ones that we file, the only requirement for most public employees is they be filed with the local authority, which would be the Ethics Hearing Board. You have the option of filing it, cross-filing it with the state. That happens if you use the online filing, but some folks file solely with the Ethics Hearing Board. I believe they're they're still publicly available, but they would have to be requested from the uh from the Ethics Office, not necessarily the state, depending on the the employee.
Okay. Um, the other point I wanna bring up is that, you know, we we have this secondary employment. We have a police shortage, I understand that. At what level, at what rank do we want to see officers stopping taking secondary detail? I, and I'll get to my, the point of my question here in a second, is that I'm aware of command staff that ne- that is working at secondary detail at uh Steelers games, for example. Is that acceptable?
When you say command staff, do you
I mean commanders.
I'm I'm not, I'm not aware of the particular rules governing that, I don't know, director, he might be there at police.
Yeah, so we do have commanders that work those events. Larger events sometimes will request a commander to oversee the officers working the detail operationally. Um, I think there's a difference between secondary employment as an officer or uh pretty much any special event, whether that be the marathon, Fourth of July. Oftentimes, those are all considered secondary employment at times, not Fourth of July, but uh, cuz that's a city event, but
Sure.
um, marathon, light-up night, a a variety of events. We still require a commander because of the number of officers out. We want that chain of command and that structure in place. Um, and some events have requested, and they do pay for, through uh cost recovery, they pay for that commander to work those events, such as a Steeler game. Um, that has been happening specifically with the Steelers for a number of years. Um, even Commander Home did did that under Chief Schubert, um, when Director Hisrich was here. So there are events that request the commander. Beyond that, um, I don't believe assistant chiefs and chiefs have that ability. They're just, that's part of their job, and they work that.
Okay. Um, well, Councilman, I appreciate the time.
Thank you, Councilman Charlin. Um, next I would like to go to our finance chair, Councilwoman Erica Strasberger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you all for joining us today. So I'll start with some um statements and then move on to questions. And I'll start by agreeing with all of you that uh Chief Scarrato was a tremendous chief. He did a great job representing the city, and um I'm really sorry to see him go. I also wanna note that, as stated before, council confirmed Chief Scarrato's appointment under the explicit premise that he would not be returning to college officiating while he served as the chief of police. And council found out through a media report, not only that Chief Scarrato planned to referee Big Ten games this season, but that he had already refereed a preseason game and was committed to a full schedule of conference games between now and March. And so as we stand this afternoon, this hearing, to me, is more about the administration's failure to inform council of a substantial change in the nature of one of the most important city employees' employment and a change that would directly contradict what council was assured about this employee's commitments when it confirmed him to the position. Instead, we were kept in the dark, and then we saw a series of varying and seemingly contradictory explanations offered over the course of a week, before the situation became untenable and the chief announced his retirement. So to the questions, last year, council voted to confirm Chief Scarrato's appointment under the explicit understanding that he would not officiate college basketball. And I want to know whether, at what point, any subsequent or concurrent agreement was reached between the chief and Mayor Gani, and why wasn't it immediately communicated to council?
I I don't have a a specific date to offer you in in terms of when they discussed revisiting the question in the future. Um, it was a, I, to 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 the um line of questioning that Councilman Wilson asked, it was, it was a um agreement or understanding between the two of them to revisit the question after a year's service that would have been um before the hi- his confirmation by council.
And as I've heard you answer already, the administration's plan was to notify council two weeks after, a week after the first officiating game?
That that game was on, I believe, a Saturday. It was on a weekend. Um, so we had planned to announce the
It was October thirteenth.
Wait, right, which was, I can't remember, again, I can't remember if that was a Saturday or a Sunday. Um, you know, we had uh planned to announce publicly the um decision, not the following Tuesday, but the Tuesday after that. So between Friday and Monday was when we had intended to relay this information. It broke earlier in that week in between.
The initial statements produced by the mayor and the chief respectively referenced a meeting between the two leaders where they struck an agreement allowing the chief to officiate college basketball again. So none of you have any recollection of the date of that meeting?
So tha- that conversation is the one I was referencing that was more recent, within the within the past two months, when we, there were a series of of conversations where the chief raised, you know, the prospect of returning to collegiate basketball refereeing and um was asking essentially for the permission to pursue it. Uh, and it was over the course of numerous conversations over a period of weeks where that um, you know, the the mayor determined that he would be supportive under the circumstances that we've previously presented, that all of that work would occur on the chief's own time. Um, the the specific date of that meeting, I I don't know, but it was within the past you know, keep month, give or take a week.
Those conversations despite uh what we were told initially upon confirmation.
Correct.
Um, when Chief Scarrato broached the possibility of returning to the court, did he offer any indication of how many hours per week or month that he would be committing to this? We heard, we heard maximum amounts, but we never heard actual details about what it, what was likely.
I'm I'm looking to the director, cuz I believe he had more direct insight into the schedule. The 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 answer to your question is yes, but he might be able to answer it more directly.
The number of games or just the date?
I'm interested in a lot of different things, number of games, frequency of overnight travel, how the chain of command would have worked.
So when the chief originally approached me with this, um, it was discussed that there would be a limited number of games, approximately forty.
Forty?
Forty. And they would be held weekends, and that there was an agreement that that's what they would work through. Um, I then notified uh the administration, mayor's office, about his in desire to return, and then the discussions happened from there.
Okay, so in the week of some of the TV news stories, um, the messaging from Chief Scarrato and the administration was that he would be able to balance both jobs without serious disruption, and I I do actually believe that we could have worked altogether had he not retired um to find a way to make that so and to to earn the trust of council. But then he subsequently offered to take a ba- pay cut in order to return to refereeing. Wouldn't that indicate that he would not be performing his full duties duties as chief?
That was not a subsequent offer. That was agreed to um prior to any games that he refereed. It was, I agree that it was not um part of the initial statements, again, because those were issued in reaction to the fact that the story had broken unexpectedly early. We had already agreed to, um, and the chief had agreed, to a reduction in his pay that would allow us to increase um the s- the salary of another, of one of the assistant chief positions in order to reestablish the position of deputy chief. Um, so that was something that he offered to do in, I think, connection to your question about chain of command. What was, um, you know, we agreed that reestablishing the position of deputy chief was important to ensuring that clarity around chain of command during his absences. And uh so that was an agreement we we reached, we had reached previously. That was not something that um he offered subsequent to this conversation becoming public.
If this plan had continued as proposed, would you have notified council and the public every time that the deputy chief was filling in for the chief?
That is done through the absence letter process, so yes.
Okay. Was there any discussion about Chief Scarrato returning to refereeing at the local level rather than committing to a time and travel-intensive Big Ten schedule?
The sk- the opportunity, I'm trying to think of the right way to put it. It was, it was Chief Scarrato who approached us in the context specifically of the um opportunity presented to him by the Big Ten. So that was what was from the beginning on the table for discussion. We would similarly have entertained um a conversation about something that was more local, um, either a different conference or high school. He he never, he never approached the administration or or Director Schmidt with those as the opportunities for consideration. So um, eh, in a hypothetical world, where 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 that was the ask that he presented to us, that's then what we would have been discussing, um, but that was not, not something that he ever raised.
I see. Was HR or law ever consulted in any of this, these decisions or discussions?
Yes.
At what point?
Throughout the, I mean, throughout the discussions, once he raised this uh matter for discussion. I mean, on an ongoing basis over over a period of time.
Were any of his deputies ever notified throughout this process of these discussions?
Well, Assistant Chief Ragland was notified um when the determination was was made so that that he would be designated to act as chief during the chief's absences on a more formal basis. Um, you know, he had previously, and and chief, correct me if I'm wrong, but but fairly consistently during Chief Scarrato's absences, it has been Assistant Chief Ragland who's been tapped for that purpose, knowing um, you know, they would become more frequent. He was informed as that prospect approached. Um, the other uh assistant chiefs, I do not believe, were notified prior to the story breaking. Again, uh Director Schmidt, correct me if I'm wrong on that.
So yeah, uh, I was notified by Chief Scarrato of his desire to go back to refereeing. That was, I think, the second week of October. I don't have an exact date. And then that's when he approached uh me about the deputy chief spot.
Thank you. Um, I look forward to moving on to the second phase of these questions about how we, how we move forward. I'll just say that um, you know, the work that we do as council members, along with the mayor's administration, only works if we keep an open line of communication and and continue to um maintain trust. And I'll be honest, this um has broken that a bit, and it'll take some time to build that back. So I hope that we can do something to to continue to um demonstrate that um council members are seen as part of the team, seen as um those who rise to the level of candid communication when serious decisions are being considered. Um, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Strasberger, and uh I'll go to Councilwoman Barbara Warwick.
Sure, thank you, and thank you all for being here. Um, yeah, so I mean, I think sort of top is that I think it's fair to say that council should have had a heads-up. Is that fair to say?
Yes.
Yeah, we should have. That would have been a better way to go, but it would have made us all feel better. Um, at any rate, um, so that said, you know, Chief Scarrato leaving, I find incredibly disappointing, right? There was a month-long search. Committee members put their time into that. Um, they understood that there was not going to be any refereeing, right? We understood that there was not gonna be any refereeing, and, you know, most importantly, um, there was an assurance that Chief Scarrato was here to stay, right? He was gonna, he was here to to be dedicated to this job for the long haul. Um, you know, obviously, we didn't know about a, you know, a verbal agreement to reevaluate the the refing situation. It seems like an odd agreement to make. But, uh, you know, we we wanted him, right? He was a good candidate, and we wanted him, and those sound like maybe they were the, you know, how how, part of the sort of unofficial terms of how we were able to get him. Um, you know, as far as the time off, uh, and just the concept of, right? You know, I I was actually o- open to it, right? Your time off is your own. Um, I do my thing when I'm off. I have, you know, I'll say myself, I have a uh, you know, before I became on council, I was a freelance writer for a software company, and I still do that on the weekends, like to ma- you know, to make extra money because, you know, whatever. So uh, your time off is your own, right? If I have a kid who plays travel baseball and I wanna go, you know, and I think that hopefully our our, you know, union leadership agrees that time earned is time earned, right? So I was, I was okay with that. Um, you know, obviously, sort of a wait-and-see benefit of the doubt, but I I was okay with the concept at least. the concept at least. The optics were not great, obviously, and it got very hot, as it can when you're in the public eye. We can all, you know, we all relate to that. But then Chief Scarrato bailed and he quit, and that really stinks. That's really disappointing that, you know. Anyway, I thought that, well, he should have stayed. He should have stuck it out. He should have just weathered the storm and stayed. And the reason he should have stayed is because, as other members have said, you know, his tenure here was incredibly successful. In the eighteen months since he joined the force, I know I saw, you know, were an extremely positive experience, right, for me as a council member. And that's not just because of Chief Scarrato, who's always, always answered the phone, was always available. He, you know, he remembered things from one year to the next, sort of, you know, around holidays and things that happened in my community, and he was on top of it, which I appreciated. You know, also, and it's more than just him, right? Like, my experience with the bureau overall has been entirely positive, right? Dedicated and responsive commanders, everyone I have worked with. There's been successful collaboration with our violence intervention program. You know, the adjustment of the, you know, the mandatory telephone reporting unit for non, you know, non-urgent cases, while not necessarily popular, I think is, you know, is freeing up time for officers, right? It is, these are good decisions, they are difficult decisions, and there are things that have been pursued. I know my commander in Zone Four has been outstanding in, you know, the issues surrounding the Jewish community and protections, extra protections and patrols that have been needed there. You know, and we've also seen pay raises and the discipline matrix. I know that preceded Chief Scarrato, but nonetheless, these are all positive things. But, you know, there's still room for improvement. We are not there yet. So, I guess I just unfortunately am just going to leave Chief Scarrato in the rearview mirror, and I kind of, my questioning is a little bit about what, what comes next. Yeah, so, because I don't think we're there yet. We have not quite delivered on what people want to see. And that is, well, two things from my perspective, and that is the community policing, where we have officers out in the community, stopping in at businesses, stopping in at after-school programs, a regular presence that, you know, provides context and empathy and understanding for officers in the communities that they serve and also builds trust with the residents. And the other thing is traffic enforcement. We've talked a lot about homicides, but from where I stand, I am hearing about traffic deaths and serious injuries, it feels like, every other week. And, and the reason is because Pittsburgh is a city where you just, it doesn't matter, right? You run a red light, you speed, whatever. It does not matter because it really feels like very little is going to happen. So, you know, drivers are out of control, and so that's something that the public wants to see. So, just kind of on that and sort of the forward-looking, Councilman Coghill mentioned 654 able-bodied officers. Can anyone give me a breakdown, sort of, between administration ops and investigations for those officers? Like, what our numbers are?
I'm not prepared to give you hard numbers. I can, I can easily give you those numbers at a later time.
Even just like a rough estimate?
So, I think we strive for operations, we strive to have about 65% of the department in that role. I know, over the past year, administration and professional standards has done their best to kind of, you know, take the able-bodied officers and put them out into the uniform amongst the neighborhoods. And so, that was our goal. Now, I guess, as I said, I'll give you hard numbers at a later time.
Okay. So, you know, in Pittsburgh, we have about ninety neighborhoods, I think. Is that the rough, right? We have ninety neighborhoods. So, and again, I don't, I hate to oversimplify, but, you know, if you could put three dedicated officers, and that's a lot, right, for a ti, you know, some of these neighborhoods are very small, three dedicated officers for each neighborhood, that would be 270 officers. So, this seems like something that's doable. I don't know if you have a comment?
I think it's absolutely doable. Our idea was to have dedicated officers assigned to the neighborhoods. That's part of the Pittsburgh Cares Initiative. It kind of started in Zone One, but, you know, if you look at the website, all of the neighborhoods have the supervisors and officers that are assigned to those neighborhoods. And so, that's always been the goal. You know, the mission has always been the mission, and it's the same with whether Chief Scarrato is here or not. I firmly believe that, you know, we have to make a true commitment to the people that live in those neighborhoods.
Yeah. So, I guess that's sort of where, this kind of leads me a little bit to sort of leadership, you know? And understand, you're the acting chief now. Thank you for, you know, stepping up and serving in that, in that role. As far as moving forward, and also Officer Schwartzwalder, I consider you a leader as well, as the, as the union leader. So, whoever the chief is, right, whether it's someone from internal or it's someone from external, however it is that we go about finalizing, or, first of all, we need a leader who can get behind this vision of community policing, right? Of officers, community policing, and making our streets safer. Because that is not about the mayor, or about me, or about, you know, progressives, or neolibs, or, you know, or blue dogs. That is about what the people want. That is what the people of Pittsburgh, I hear it over and over again, right? That they want to see officers out in their neighborhoods, and they want to see people, I mean, we talk about traffic calming, people are begging for speed humps. We say, "Well, we can't do a speed hump on every street." They say, "Well, we want..." Then where's the enforcement? People, the people want this. So, we need a leader that can get behind that community policing model, but who can also inspire the rank and file, the commanders, and everyone all down the line, who can inspire all those folks to get excited and get behind that community policing model too. And I just feel in the conversations I've had, and again, everyone I've worked with has been fantastic, but we do not have a unified police force right now. We do not have commanders right now who are, whether or not it's, and I don't know what the issues are, whether it's sort of fundamental disagreements about how things are supposed to work, or whether it is, you know, personality issues from way back. I don't know, and I don't want to speculate on that. But, you know, that inspiration has to come from the top. So, I don't know if you have any comments on that?
Which part do you want me to comment on?
Well, no, I, again, I know, it's, it's...
So, I, you know, if we're going to go into the, you know, the, where do we go from here?
We are, I hope, after we get through...
Well, I mean, I think she's kind of, unless, I mean, I think she's being it up.
Well, unless you're willing to withhold that question until we start talking about where we go.
Well, I, I'm almost done. I mean, I just, if, you know, but I just want to say, and this is more, and Officer Schwartzwalder, this is, this is for you too, right? Like, when we are sniping at each other in the press, that does not inspire. That does not inspire. When we are, you know, sort of, from on the backside, being like, "Oh, you know, this or that," or whatever, like, we need, I don't know what needs to happen. Maybe someone needs to take someone out, out for a beer, have a conversation, get through some issues. But, I mean, when I hear things like, for example, questioning the reduction in our homicide rate, our officers should be proud that our homicide rate is down. They should be proud. Every single officer on this force should be proud, standing up tall and saying, "You know what? The homicide rate in Pittsburgh has gone down." Because that's what the people want, right? And, and it is, it is by allowing, not questioning it, not saying, "Well, maybe it's down because, you know, the paramedics come in and save someone, and he got shot anyway, but he didn't die." That is, that is undermining the work that our officers do. And it is dangerous work, and it is often thankless work. And so, we need leadership, whoever that may be, to work together from the very top to the union, to the commanders, all the way down the chain, so that everyone can feel good about the work we're doing together in the city of Pittsburgh. Again, I am so disappointed in Chief Scarrato, I cannot tell you. I am so disappointed. But, that doesn't mean that the good work that he started cannot continue, and that is what is the most important for me. So, that's all from me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Warwick. And I just want to run these numbers by you. It'll take me two seconds. I have a lot of faith in Dan, who works for, or, you know, with the union, and he keeps, he posts it on a regular basis. The number of able-bodies is 654. You take out the commanders, you take out the chiefs, you take out military leave, you take out compensation, people are hurt, that's the number, 654. So, sworn officers may be like 740 or so, like that. But, but the able-bodies are 654, and we derive that number through taking out the people who are not going to be on the street. So, with that. So, so this is the last part of the first round here, and I will add up a few follow-up questions if we have them, but I'd like to move on to something more positive, to, you know, looking into the future here, I think. But with that, we'll go with a distinguished Councilman Kari Mosley, and a couple follow-up questions from some of the members, and we'll move on to better things.
Thank you, Chairman. I want to thank everyone for coming today, as well as everyone who's in the gallery as well. And I share the disappointment of my esteemed colleague, Councilwoman Warwick. Now, I've built a really, really great working relationship with Chief Scarrato. He's one of my constituents, and he's liberty, so I would see him a lot in the community. And, and, you know, really, you know, became very fond of him over the last year and a half that I've got to know him as a candidate for council, and then over the course of this year, as a member of council. I just have a few questions before we get to the next round, because, you know, I think most of my colleagues did their best, Mike Wallace impressions, 60 Minutes, so, I won't belabor. The point, but I just had a couple of questions just as a follow-up to what some of my esteemed colleagues, you know, have raised. This is, you know, for anyone on the panel. If someone could just elaborate a bit, just on the chain of events from, I think, the best way that we can call, since we've been using this word, revisiting, kind of, the chain of events from, you know, the revisiting process, you know, to the scrimmage in Michigan, and then, you know, what kind of led us, you know, to the decision, you know, last Friday, if someone could just walk us through that.
Sure. So, Chief Scarrato approached first Director Schmidt, who then escalated the issue to Chief Frank, myself, and ultimately, we met with the mayor to discuss Chief Scarrato's interest in returning to collegiate basketball in the context of an offer from the Big Ten Conference to participate in their upcoming season as one of their stable, if you will, of referees for men's basketball. That led to some initial discussions amongst the mayor's executive team and public safety, the departmental leadership, by which I mean Director Schmidt, about that prospect, followed by discussions directly with Chief Scarrato about the, the request, the time, how he, how he thought he would go about managing that, that additional obligation, where we two agree, how he would, you know, utilize his own time and how that would fit the schedule, which he assured us and then demonstrated he could do. His thoughts about who would, you know, be in operational command of the bureau during his absences, which is, I referenced earlier, you know, prior to this, Assistant Chief Ragland was regularly and most frequently among the assistant chiefs, the one designated to be acting chief when the, when Chief Scarrato was on vacation or otherwise unavailable. How we would proceed there. Ultimately, the mayor and made the determination that he was comfortable moving forward under the terms that we had agreed to with the chief for how that would work, which would include utilizing his own time, elevating Assistant Chief Ragland to deputy chief for the purposes of clarifying that chain of command during those absences, a reduction in his salary in order to allow us to make that deputy chief position, return it to the budget without increasing the bottom line. And then, we were, you know, making preparations to announce that publicly, you know, slightly more than a week after the first game, when the story broke midweek, you know, the week before our intended announcement.
Thank you. And Director Schmidt, you had mentioned that the agreement was around forty games over the course of the season. How many games per week would that be, or, you know, over, because I guess a college basketball season is, you know, November to...
Yeah, it was from October through March.
Yeah.
So, it would ebb and flow, but mostly, he originally indicated weekends. I think that was before schedules were finalized and figured out. You know, we felt it wouldn't be, it would be mostly weekends, so it wouldn't be too impactful to the normal day-to-day operations. You know, he would always be available by phone unless he was actually on the court refereeing games. So, it would be. We had discussions around whether it was feasible or not, and that's kind of where that led.
Sure, thank you. And, and do you, does anyone, you know, at the table have any, you know, concerns about the potential negative impact that the loss of Chief Scarrato could have given, you know, what is, I think, widely considered, you know, among many people around the city, is, you know, the really positive, you know, work, work that he's done? And have you given thought about, you know, how we could potentially mitigate any potential, you know, negative impact from this tremendous loss for the city?
I certainly do agree, as we've, I think several people, you know, on both sides of this table have said, that it is a loss, and that Chief Scarrato was a unique and very impactful leader for the bureau, and is responsible for a lot of positive progress that we've seen in the past almost two years. I think our, our focus, as we lead into the conversation about what's to come next, will be on how to ensure that we continue that progress and not ultimately make his departure, you know, a loss or an impediment to that continued development, but rather something that, that can continue to move forward. But that, you know, this, like, like any other departure of a, you know, senior, and in this case, very effective official, is a challenge. But, of course, the bureau and the city are, you know, more than any one person. And so, you know, we're, one of the things we're grateful to Chief Scarrato for doing is for elevating new leaders into the assistant chief positions, who are very capable, very dedicated, and who we have confidence in to lead the bureau through this interim period while we collectively make those decisions, as well as to continue to have important roles in its leadership moving forward. So, we think that the positive work can and will continue now, and we then can make plans together for what comes next.
If I could just build on that for a second, I think, you know, assistant chiefs, commanders, you know, but also lieutenants and sergeants, the way that I actually got to know Chief Ragland a little bit was in the selection processes for all of those ranks, which was an incredibly robust process. People write an essay, people get interviewed, we talk to people about what their leadership has been outside of the bureau, you know, with the vision in mind that all of you have spoken to so eloquently. And I think, you know, when I say to myself, "Okay, inhale, exhale, where are we going?" And one of the things that I'm, that I'm really proud of that we did together and... that I'm really proud of that we did together, and grateful for Chief Scarrato for, you know, having empowered then Chief Ragland to help lead us through, is just the, I think, elevation of strong leadership at every single rank across the city. And I think that's when, you know, when Councilperson Warwick is saying that she feels, you know, every interaction is a positive interaction. I do think that's because the leadership is at the top, but it is also, you know, elsewhere. And I think that's an important thing to recognize.
Thank you. I look forward to the conversation about what's next.
Yeah, thank you, Councilwoman Mosley. Thank you. And I'm just going to allow, I just ask members, if anybody has a follow-up, just to be brief, so we can move on to the next subject. And I know, Councilwoman Kail Smith, you had some follow-up.
Just briefly, that it was said that the FOP and others knew about the report, and there have been previous reports saying that they did not know. So I just want to say that that's, I want to make sure for the public, because we're getting all sorts of information from the public saying different things, and that, and they have some questions about the amount of time and games and things like that. So I would just like to say that if council chose to make this an investigation, you'd be, we could say, we want you to take an oath. And so you would be giving these answers under oath. Would you be willing to do that if we asked that?
Yes. And to clarify...
I want each of you to answer that.
Yes.
Yes.
Absolutely, yes.
Hundred percent. May I ask a clarifying question to one of the things you said?
Please, please. I do want to give you a chance to say, because I don't want, when you leave, I don't want to get 20 more phone calls, or 20 more, where people say, this was, you didn't ask this, or this was wrong. I want you to clarify whatever's...
When you say "the report," what are you referring to?
The audit in Florida.
Yeah. No, I did not see a copy of the audit itself. I don't think anyone here intentionally represented us as having reviewed and audit. We were aware that one had occurred from media reports from Fort Lauderdale. I believe everyone who was involved in the interview process was aware that that had occurred in Fort Lauderdale. But I don't mean to represent that anyone involved in that search. Certainly, I personally was not, had reviewed a copy of it. So if that was the misunderstanding or miscommunication, I just want to state that part very clearly.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for clarifying. And then I just want to clarify that when council, you mentioned that council had approved the time and the contract for the, not the contract, but the agreement, the pay and everything else for the former chief, well, for Chief Scarrato, he's still chief. And I just want to say council did so under the impression that we were under the agreement that he was not going to be refereeing, that there was going to be certain parameters. Not that we have privy or knowledge of all this other information. So I just want to make sure council voted at the time on what we had in front of us. So I just want to make sure that's clear. That's it. I just wanted to clarify those. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Anybody else have a...
No, but I can't wait for the second round.
Okay, okay, good. Before we start second round, I want to say a couple of things. The purpose of this is to be transparent, okay? I don't feel the administration's been transparent with council. I don't feel that it's impossible for us to be transparent with the public because of things we don't know. When that report that we paid $80,000 for has in that report that, oh, red flag, Chief Scarrato was working on city time, that is absolutely information we need to have in front of us. And whoever decided to say, ah, they don't really need that because it was never made public, that was incompetent. It really was, as far as I'm concerned. Let me finish, and I'll let you reply, okay? So, no excuse for that. We all saw me on the video from May 18th, and, you know, you were here, you all were here, right, with the interview, I believe? And I asked Chief Scarrato, I said, you know, because this was a concern of mine, right, before I hired him, before we hired him. You know, you're not going to be refereeing any college games, right? He said, exactly. No, I'm not going to be refereeing college games. Now, to find out that he had a private conversation with the mayor saying, oh, we'll revisit it. Why is that not brought to us? That is just unconscionable to me, all right? We're making the decision to fund for a $40,000 raise, $185,000 a year, and we're not getting the information that we actually, quite frankly, paid for, the taxpayers, for the report. Didn't even get that information, right? You had said you don't regret hiring Chief Scarrato. I think one thing's good, is we all agreed that Chief Scarrato was doing a great job. I agree with that. I've done nothing but compliment him, I have. I absolutely regret it, though. In the way of about a million and a half dollars is what it's going to cost the city of Pittsburgh. So when you say you don't regret it, you're saying 18 months of Chief Scarrato was worth a million and a half dollars of taxpayer money, not to mention a new chief that we're going to have to hire, right? So to me, that is not worth it. It's going to cost us our pension fund, it's going to cost us a lot, not to mention morale, I believe. And finally, I want to say this. I am so tired of getting reports back from the media, whether it's the mayor or somebody in the administration cutting deals, right to the point where we were talking about Chief Scarrato's going to take a $20,000 pay cut to supplement Chief Ragland. I'm like, who in their right mind would do that without consulting with council? We approve the money. We're the bankers, right? For the administration to go behind closed doors and say, it's going to be okay, don't worry about it, you know, we'll work it out, to the point where you even worked out the salary, when we're the ones that approved the salary, last night I checked, okay? It's just, it's, I don't know, it's irresponsible. It's absolutely irresponsible, I will tell you. So I don't want to hear from the press anymore. I really don't. You know, I'm tired of it. I'm tired of, we went through this with the NFL draft, we went through this with other things, you know? We're like the last ones to hear. I got Julia from the Trib as my source. That's who my source is. And I'm the chair. So, you know, something's wrong. It's a communication issue, is really what it is. We shouldn't be here talking about Scarrato. We should have all been in that conversation throughout the process. You, or anybody from the administration, should have said, the minute that you knew of the mayor and Scarrato talking about it's okay to go back to refereeing, this should have been brought to our attention, absolutely, right? You knew we hired him, we saw it. I can play it again, if you all want to see it. But, you know, I was under the impression, and I think most council members were, under the impression that, you know, he's not going to referee basketball games. That's what I was told. I didn't see the report that we paid for, as the audit goes, and the accusations there. I don't know who decided not to show us that, but that's a mistake as well, I think. So it's hard for me to gain trust. It's hard for me to have faith in what your next decision is with the chief, I will tell you. So I'm going to, I want to be fully involved in that. I'm going to do my own vetting process, with or without you. I would hope you'd support that. But I want to make sure our next chief's heart is in it, okay? And that's where we lost Scarrato. It was his heart, it was in something else. I don't begrudge him that. God bless him. He's moving on, he's doing good things, and I probably would have made the same decision if I were him, knowing that he had talked to the mayor about it. But here's my question. Chief Scarrato sat at his table, you watched it, and told me, and told council that he would not referee games. Are you willing to take legal action in order to secure and protect our pension? Because we hired him under false premise, as far as I'm concerned.
I don't know, I complain.
I can't answer that question without consulting with the law department. To some of the items you raised, I again want to be clear.
Okay.
The engagement with public sector consulting did not produce a report. It produced an application process that resulted in a series of candidates for which they provided, you know, background information to the members of the search committee who participated in interviews. Did not produce a final report of the kind that we would transmit. It was information relevant to conducting interviews. So that information was made available to those who were participating in the interviews to then make a recommendation to the mayor for who to nominate. There was an invitation...
Miss Tuck, you, there was a mayor informed of this audit at that time?
Yes. Yes, he saw all the materials. I'll just further, again, underline, and she's already spoken to this, and expressed some of her reasons for declining the invitation. But through then-council president Kail Smith, we offered for three council members, the council president, the finance chair, and the public safety chair, to form one of those interview panels, which would have resulted in those three members having all of those same materials for the purposes of conducting interviews themselves. That offer was declined. And so those members who would have received that information did not, because they did not participate in the interviews. To the question about the ultimate pension implications of Chief Scarrato's hiring, it is, you know, he is, he had years of service that constituted vesting in the pension system. He's receiving the pension that he's earned. I don't, I understand the numerical basis of your calculation, but it is the, as with any other member of the police bureau who's part of that particular pension plan, or any city employee, there are uniform rules for the calculation of a pension, and those are being followed here.
Yeah. I'm not saying he broke any rules or laws doing that. I'm saying the difference is a $50,000 pension to a $92,500 pension annually for the rest of his life, for 18 months of service. Not worth it to me. I don't care how much good things he's done. You know, we have good brass here, we have good management through the Pittsburgh Police Force, we know Ragland, I see Marty Devine's here. We got so many qualified people. To say it's worth $42,000, $43,000 a year for 18 months, that's not worth it to me. It's just not worth it, you know? And who knows if his policies and all the wonderful things that he's done are going to stick. We don't know. We don't know, we don't even know who the next chief is going to be. So, God, I'm sorry. Do you want to follow up on anything else?
No, I guess only on that issue of compensation. When you look at the prior, or even our current chief compensation, it is dramatically lower than chiefs of similarly sized cities are making across the country. So in order to secure quality candidates, we knew that that would be a concern from the start.
I get that. I really do. And I'm not talking about other departments, I'm not talking about what the average is across the country. I'm talking about what it means to Pittsburgh's bottom line. It means $42,500 extra every year, God willing, that Chief Scarrato, once he starts collecting his pension, it will cost our pension fund. And we struggle so hard to keep funded at 10%, right? Or we will be in their future. So, you know, it's just...
The pension funds in nearly 70%. But I do take your point, that that is a top priority.
Okay. So, again, I have no qualms about the job he did. I think he did a great job. I wish he would have chose to stay. I do. I don't blame him for leaving, but I wish he would have chose to stay. And finding out he had the arrangement with the mayor, well, I can't even fault him. I can't even fault him. I'm sore a little bit. I feel jilted in a way. But if that's the agreement he had, unknowing to council, I guess that's the agreement he had with the mayor. I don't think that was proper, by any way, shape, or form. We should have known that when we voted to confirm him or not. We should have had that information along, whether we had a team from council or not. That should have been brought to us. We all were at the hearings. We all heard Chief Scarrato say, I am not going to go refereeing. I don't want to play the clip again, but I could play it over and over again. That's the understanding that council was led to believe. So was it worth it? No. Not at $1.5 million is what it's going to cost us for his 18 months of service. It's not worth it to me, I will tell you. So, anybody else have anything to wind up, and then we can move on. And then here's what I'm going to do, as soon as these two are done, Chief Ragland, I'd like to hear from you as to your vision, and, you know, you're going to be acting chief, and, you know, I want to hear a little bit about how you feel the department should run, and any changes you might make, or things of that nature. Councilwoman Kail Smith, and then Councilwoman Charla.
Is this part for the second phase?
No, but we could jump right into that right now.
Well, I want to jump into that.
Okay, good, good. Councilwoman Charla?
Yeah. Can I do my question, do you want first?
Well, wait, we're not jumping right in there just yet. I'm just making sure you don't have any follow-up. This is about Scarrato. Let's put it behind us and move on.
I just have one last question. So when the statements came out from the mayor's office and from the chief, did the, was the mayor's office consulted in the chief's statement? Did the mayor's office write that statement?
No, but we were consulted before it was issued.
Okay. And then the mayor's office released their statement later in the day?
That's correct.
Okay. The only, the last thing I'll just ask is that you said you were preparing to, preparing to let council know about this agreement. Are there any remnants that prove that as something that you were actually doing? Are there any communications, anything that our great media can search for and are right to know? I mean...
Not that I'm aware of. You know, we were planning a media announcement for Tuesday. We would have, but no, there wouldn't, not that I can think of any records that we were, of what exactly those preparations were.
Anything from you, Chief Frank?
You know, I had a sense of the calendar. I think if you looked in my datebook, you'd see a big circle around it, and we were sort of working backwards. I'd have to actually flip through the dates. So if what you mean is like, you know, a memo or something like that, no. But we did have, I think, in our minds, a fairly clear sense of what we thought the timeline was. We thought we would have time to do appropriate briefing of people who would need to, you know, have some understanding of it. And, I don't know, can I share this? And in part because I think it took, I'll just speak for myself. It took me a minute, I think, to digest the idea, because my first reaction, I think, was the first reaction that I think some of you had, I think that a lot of people had, which is like, what? And what is this going to mean? And how is it going to work? And then I think for me, as I started to think to myself, well, really, where do I want him to spend his vacation? Las Vegas, you know? And then this started to sound like a kind of, you know, that it would hold some possibilities for our young people, that it really was his time, and that he really was a good chief. And so my, you know, my thinking shifted around this question, just myself personally. But it took a minute for me to sort of like think it through, like, what is this actually going to mean? Is it something that we could actually manage? I mean, I think, I think Councilmember, you know, Strasburger said it, is that I got to the point, too, where I thought, well, we could work this out if we worked it out. And so that was really, I mean, again, I'll just speak for myself. That was really my hope. That was really my plan, was to, you know, engage people and maybe even let people have a little bit of time, only because I knew it took me a little bit of time to go from like, however could this happen, to like, well, it is his time, and he's going to spend it somewhere, and this isn't the worst place to spend it. Sort of like the reaction of your son. So, I mean, that's just, I'm just sharing what was in the contents of my head, a genuine desire to give all of you, you know, and some, maybe some other key folks, the time to sort of work through it and digest it.
Do you happen to have your calendar on you? I would like to see that circled, if you say that circled. We've got a lot of work to do to build trust here, you know?
Yeah. Is it your turn? Yeah, it can be your turn. I don't think I have anything to show you that's going to prove what you're hoping I could prove.
Thank you. President Schwartzwater?
Real easy answer. I mean, you're hiring directors here, you know, chiefs of police, assistant chiefs of police, before Chief Ragland takes office, or anybody else. I'd be putting a employment contract established by the IACP, that you tell them how many years they're going to serve, and what salary, et cetera, et cetera, just like you do with me with a labor agreement. And if they violate that contract or in breach, you may not have to pay them a pension, may not have to give them retiree healthcare, or any of those other things. So that's how you do it. You put them to a binding contract. Many chiefs of police and assistant chiefs of police and other command staff personnel are required to do that. So in my opinion, you have a commitment and a credibility problem here. And I've remained very, very quiet, you know, throughout this process, invited here by Councilwoman Colleen Hill and Councilwoman Warwick. Bind them to a contract that council can control, or you just don't fund it. That's just my...
You forgot, I invited them to the table.
All right. I know we want to get on to the next point here. I've got a lot on that, so, thank you.
Okay. I just want to say this to counsel, or to Chief Frank. You know, I think this council had an open mind. I originally called this post-agenda because I wanted to hear from the chief how you're going to juggle both jobs, right? I wanted him to convince us. I really did. You know, I didn't know if he could or not. I know my constituents weren't happy to hear about it. I said, reserve your judgment. I said, we're going to put him in front of us, and he's going to tell us how he's going to do it, with your backing, because you all believed that he could, too. I was hoping that we could be convinced. You know, obviously, again, it comes down to a communication problem. We heard from the press, and when we hear from the press, we do, at least me, I react, right? And they showed me the proof, and I don't even know what to say. I mean, you know, we had no fair warning of this. Had we all sat down, if you called a special meeting with council, we would have at least talked this out to see if we should pursue this, without it coming to the press and getting to the point it is. So with that, I want to thank everybody for, you know, listening and your honest answers on this subject. These questions needed to be answered, I will tell you. And hiring the next chief, I want every little bit of information there is, everything. bit of information there is, everything, you know? I expect it, right? I mean, you're going to ask us to vote on somebody's salary and not give us information? That's unacceptable. So, I will be doing my own vetting process, so I know we don't have to go through this again. With that, I'd like to turn it over to a more positive note, Chief Ragland, right? Tell us about you and tell us how you're going to make this city go like a fine-oiled machine and all the good policies you're going to bring to Pittsburgh.
Well, thank you for that opportunity, Councilman. And I want to apologize to the council. If you feel like anybody in the PVP maybe misled you. However, I will say, like you, I'm very sad to see Chief Scarrato go. Chief Scarrato provided me and some others an opportunity to take a greater leadership role in this organization. And I can't thank him enough for that opportunity. If you'll indulge me, you know, for a little bit, when we were searching for a new chief, I had, I think, 28 or 29 years in and was, you know, contemplating the next chapter of, you know, my career and my life. And when Chief Scarrato was kind of named chief and he kind of was talking about some of his, you know, vision and goals, it really resonated me because those were my vision and goals as well. And so, you know, the mission doesn't change. It's why I signed up and became his assistant chief. Recruitment and retention, that's still a primary goal. Officer wellness, still a very primary goal. Reducing violent crime, building relationships. And what I'll say is, I think, you know, I've been with this place for 30 years. And I think I've had a, you know, a leadership role since 2001 as a lieutenant. And, you know, in my role, I got promoted to commander, I think, in 2015. And I think in those roles, like, I have demonstrated initiatives that, you know, truly kind of, you know, hit home on each of those goals. You know, I can expound on some of those if you'd like. And, you know, one of the most rewarding ones for me was when I was in Zone One. I was the commander of Zone One. During that time, I grew up in the North Side, so I kind of came back home a little bit. I had some relationships, but I built others. And, you know, there was some great partners that I got to, you know, partner with, great people. And, you know, some of the things that you kind of heard about with, you know, what's important to the residents of the North Side, you know, what will you need to make the North Side a thriving community? And, you know, there was a, it was a lot of themes that kind of came together, right? People were concerned about healthcare. People were concerned about housing. People were concerned about education. People were concerned about employment. And people were concerned about public safety. And if you look at those five things, they're all interrelated. If you have a deficiency in one of those, you probably have a deficiency in all. If you are underemployed, your housing isn't stable, you're undereducated, you probably don't feel very safe. And so, how as we as police officers, can we, you know, step into that role and increase public safety? Well, it's through partnerships and each of those other pillars. That's what it is. And so, you know, using that model, you know, we put together the Calvin Hall Northview Heights Public Safety Center. And, you know, we didn't just thrust that upon the community. You know, I, as the commander, I think I door-knocked that entire, you know, community, invited them to a community meeting, kind of listened to them, asked, you know, "Would you like something like this?" And they were very skeptical at first, no doubt. But, you know, we built trust. And so, what happened was is, you know, I had, I convinced six officers and a sergeant in partnership with the housing authority to put a public safety center there. They took basically two units, turned it into a police station slash community center where we could host community gatherings and build trust. And what happened was, is what you found was, is that our officers were not just solving crime. They were dealing with, you know, the individuals who had shortcomings in some of those other areas. They show up to a domestic, find out maybe the root cause, maybe, you know, somebody lost their job and there's a little bit of food scarcity there. Hey, we can pick up a phone and call one of our partners, get yourself, get you a food box here. And that makes a difference. It makes people feel that we care.
Thank you, Chief Ragland. I do want to say thank you for your years of service. I know you're a Pittsburgh guy through and through. I hope our next chief, whether it be you or somebody else, is a local Pittsburgh police officer or somebody tied to the police department. I truly do. I personally will not fund a new search, a nationwide search. I'm not going to spend $80,000 to not get information I didn't get last time. I will say that. I do, I will say I have complete confidence in our police department. Director Schmidt, you've been forthcoming and honest with me from the time you come here. I think you got a good grip as to whether we're talking about EMS, firefighters, or the Pittsburgh Police Department. So, I have confidence in what's here. What I lack confidence in is communication with the administration is really what it comes down to. Okay, Councilwoman Kell Smith, please.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. I first want to reiterate one more time that as council president, I declined to take part of this process because from the very beginning, I thought the process was flawed. You cannot have three council members on and 20 other people and think the council has some kind of voice on there. So, I didn't want council to get wrapped up in the middle of a mess. And I think that we actually dodged a bullet because it sounds like this is not a great, great outcome here. So, for that, I will say, and if people want me to elaborate more, I will. But for that, I will say that I also think that there's times when council needs to look at the structure of the bureau because you see the numbers are declining so much. And I think it's time for us to look. Council, city council can restructure departments. And a lot of people don't realize that. And I think that sometimes we need to look at that. But for me, I want to know, I want to put this out here because I want to give you a chance to say what really is happening here. Some of the things we have heard, and I actually talked to somebody who confirmed it, and I'll talk about that in a second, but that, Chief Ragland, you were selected because of your relationship, Lisa, with Diana Bucha from the Buell Foundation. And I did ask Diana about it, and she did confirm that that was true. But she didn't say it in a way that it was something nefarious. I said, "I want to put this out there." Just as I would make a recommendation, just as somebody else would make a recommendation, that's how she said she made her recommendation to you about putting in Commander Ragland into a leadership role as a assistant chief, I think it was. And because it was a program you had done over at Perry High School. And she wanted that program at Perry to be expanded throughout the city. And have, so that's my question first. First of all, have you expanded that program that was initially at Perry?
Yeah, I can, so that program has been expanded through all the high schools and one middle school with Pittsburgh Public. It's a Safer Together program. It's a grant-funded...
It's a Safer Together program?
Right.
Because that was in place?
Safe passageways, sorry.
Yeah, I think that's...
There's a lot of acronyms and...
But it had a lot of success, is what she had said.
Yes. Yeah, and it just started last school year. And this is, so this is the second school year that program has been in place. And we have seen positive results as it's spread throughout. But yeah, Perry High School had, I think, the commander, sorry, Acting Chief Ragland, who was commander at the time, could probably speak a little more. They had a significant fighting issue ongoing as that program developed. It had significant success. So, we have spread that throughout the city.
Okay. And then, is there any part of it in the West at all? In the West End? District Two, my area?
Every high school. Every PPS high school.
So, there's not a high school?
There's no high school, right.
In our area. There's a Catholic high school, but there's not a public high school. Canova. Bishop Canova, you're alumni.
Yes. If I could just briefly note to the first part you mentioned, Diana Bucha from the Buell Foundation has, I think, given a positive reference or recommendation to Assistant Chief Ragland to many people in the administration over the past three years. It's not, certainly not from my perspective, fair to say there's a one-to-one relationship or accurate, I said, to say there's a one-to-one relationship between that recommendation and any decisions that were made. It's a factor.
Well, she said she was going to fund the program. Did you receive funding from the Buell Foundation?
Not as a condition of any particular...
Did you receive funding from the Buell Foundation, though, for the program?
I believe that's...
She funded the original program at Perry. She's not funding the citywide program.
That's the PCD.
That is funded through the Pennsylvania...
So, that's what's my understanding. That's what she had said, that she had offered to help do that.
Yeah, the expanded program as it exists today is funded by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, not by a foundation. And there's certainly no direct relationship between any promotion...
So, just so you know, I talked to her directly. I didn't like, I wasn't just hearing what other people were saying. And she had given actual reasonable explanation that it was, you know, her making a recommendation, just like I would make a recommendation, just like you would make a recommend. So, I'm just saying that that's what people, and there's a lot of that on the street that people were hearing.
Sure. And I think we're agreeing. I just wanted to underscore.
So, why did, why was Commander Ragland selected then? For what, first of all, let me get this straight. You're the director of OMI, OMB, no, OMB. You are the chief of operations and you're the director of public safety. The director of the, the chief of staff is not here. But the staff members, the directors, report to you, correct? Do I have this correct? You said that earlier. I want to make sure I have this right.
The chain of command here, if you will, are, is that Chief Frank reports to me, Director Schmidt reports to her, and Acting Chief Ragland reports to him.
Okay, because I thought you said something different before. So, I wanted to get this straight. So, who selected Commander Ragland? Was that, or Chief Ragland? Was that Larry Scarrato? Was that one of you? Tell me.
He was Chief Scarrato who proposed, who determined that Chief Ragland would be his choice to serve as acting chief in his absences.
Okay, so there's, then the deputy chief, I just want to say, there is no such position except for you can deputize somebody. But within 90 days, you have to come before council for an interview. Council doesn't have the right to say no, but we do have the right not to fund the position.
Yes, we were, we were planning, and this will, well, we were going to include the recreation of the deputy chief position in the November budget proposal.
And you, but you did not have a conversation with council about it? You were just going to do it?
No. We were going to propose it...
Do you think that you have, automatically have your five votes here? Is that why?
So, the...
I mean, I feel like there's no communication with council. And I feel like part of that is, is because, because we fund, certainly fund a lot of positions for communications. So, there's certainly should be some communications with us.
Councilwoman...
No, no, no. I'm not done. But what I think is, that's frustrating to me, is that I feel like you think that you have your votes to do whatever you want, so you just do it. And so, and then when you have a little pushback, it becomes this kind of, you know, this kind of thing that happens. You know, we're having post-agendas, we're having public hearings, maybe investigations, we're doing all sorts of things. When all it was, was a simple, "Let's talk to council about something."
Sure.
That's it.
So, in terms of recreating the position of deputy chief, which existed until this budget year and was not included in the proposed, the adopted budget for 2024, we intended to rev, to include that in the November final budget proposal. Until such time as that could occur, the intention was, as is the case anytime the chief is absent, they threw an acting letter, which is transmitted to the controller and council, to name Assistant Chief Ragland to be acting chief during the chief's absence. So, nothing...
Acting, not a deputy. So, I think it's the deputy part that we're, you know, wondering how that came about without any conversation. That's at, at least I am. And I would just say that I think this is the time that, and I also am going to say this. We're hearing a lot about how great Chief Scarrato was. And I liked him very much as a person. But I'm not going to pretend that this bureau has not been divided. I'm not going to pretend that this bureau has not had issues. I'm not going to pretend that there wasn't a mass amount of people, you know, retiring early from this bureau, from this department. And so, I'm not going to pretend that everything was fine. It was not fine everywhere. And we are divided. So, with that said, how would you bring back this and unite this if you were given the chance? Because I'm going to be with you. I'm going to be honest. I'm going to be right with you, Councilwoman Colville, and making sure council has a voice in this. I'm going to make sure that if we go down this road, we're going to restructure this department. And if we don't, we'll make sure the public knows why and who was not with them. And making sure that they don't just want to see an officer on the street. They want to know the officers are going to be able to enforce the laws and to protect them on the streets. And so, for, I mean, and the people that's affecting the most are the people we all say that we care about. So, I want to know how you plan on bringing this department, this bureau together. How do you plan on uniting it?
So, I think people leave this job for any number of reasons. So, I don't want to, you know, say that there's a majority of the people that are leaving because they're unhappy here. But I, what I will say is, is that, you know, I have to do a tremendous job of building relationships. I think Chief Scarrato has put together a tremendous command team. I was able to, you know, his news caught all of us by surprise. You know, I reached out to each member of the command staff to talk to them, see where they were. And, you know, I was able to, you know, talk to all but two. And so, what that tells me is, is there's two people that I need to build relationships with. And I will do that all throughout the bureau. And I will just, you know, stress those individuals to do that all throughout the bureau. When you become a police officer, you do so because you want to help people, you want to make a difference. My job is to empower those individuals to, and allow them to do that and, you know, do the job that they wanted to do. And make them feel valued, make them feel heard, and make them feel part of the process.
So, I'm going to say, I don't think it's just two people. If it were just two people, there would be no conversation. I think there's a lot of people saying a lot of things. And a lot of people are hearing things across the city. This is your chance to say, "Hey, this is how I'm going to unite people. This is how I'm going to bring them together. And this is how I'm going to govern. If I have, if I have the opportunity to lead, this is how I'm going to lead." And, you know, I like, how many, do you have an increase or decrease in the number of people going to arbitration or filing complaints or what's happening there?
I would say of all the labor unions in the city of Pittsburgh, I have been to the Labor Relations Board involving police administration more than any other police bargaining unit in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. They know me by first name at the Labor Relations Board. They know me in Harrisburg by the Labor Relations Board. Commonwealth Court judges know me about labor relations and so does the Supreme Court. Not because I like it, but I spend a half a million dollars a year of Members Dues money litigating against the city for nonsense. And every single case that we win, the city appeals it all the way as far as they can until the court shuts them down. And they don't care because it's not their money. It is the city's taxpayers' money. And then my members have to pay out of their pocket to correct it. And I would challenge anybody at this table to say that I'm incorrect. So, that's, that's the issue.
Okay. So, with that being said, I think that there's a lot of people that are seeing the change in the police department. They're saying how great it is. But for you, great might mean it's more disciplinary action, which might be increasing the disappointment and the frustration of the rank and file. It might be the same things that the public are saying, that people aren't responding because they're not responding to calls because they're afraid to act because they don't feel the support from the administration. How would you support your officers in doing their jobs if they're, if they're, if, and, you know, some of the things I'm concerned about is, you know, coming up, we have an election coming up. And I'm certain that there's going to be some kind of, you know, concern about how people are going to react to the results of that election. I want to know what you're telling the officers. Are you telling them anything about how they're going to respond to stuff like that? Or are you going to tie their hands, as they have been in the past? And so, the public's at risk, businesses are at risk, properties are at risk. I just want to know what, how are we handling this stuff? How are you supporting them to do their job and to do what they were hired to do?
By telling them. So, I would disagree with the fact that, you know, the characterization that, you know, we were tying officers' hands. I, you know, I know that some council has been, you know, somewhat critical of this mayoral administration. But I've never been in a meeting where, you know, any of these individuals have said, "I do not want you to take police action." You know, police officers have discretion all along, you know, with enforcement of crimes. And sometimes, you know, discretion is a better part of valor. So, to answer your question about like how I would support, I think we have to do a better job with our award process. I think we have to recognize officers in a more timely manner. I think with respect to how we ensure that they feel that they are supported and do the right thing is encourage them to use the tools they have. We have body worn camera. Body worn camera is very important. It truly, you know, in a lot of the cases, and OMI will give you a report, it clears officers more often than not because if you don't have video, you have two sides of a story and they don't know who to believe. And so, I have, you know, in my tenure, I think, you know, we were, you know, our activation rate for body worn cameras was around 38%. And, you know, now it's, you know, close to 80%. And so, you know, I did that by highlighting the individuals who do the right thing. And, you know, every month, there is a leaderboard who in the zones get ranked. And I think that is healthy competition. And I think that the individuals appreciate being recognized for doing the right thing. And I think that the individuals appreciate being recognized for doing the right thing.
So I'm going to give you this little analysis. Somebody said to me the other day, it's like they watched the socialist screaming that, you know, they want to get rid of the Good Old Boys Club, and they just, they just recreated another Good Old Boys Club. And they feel like in this Bureau, it's similar. You you just, you know, did away and destroyed what you thought was a Good Old Boys Club, and created another Good Old Boys Club. And so I think the only way we bring this Bureau together, and Director, I want to know what part you're going to have in this. I mean, are you going to have a say in who's the commander? Because I don't necessarily feel comfortable, or the Chief, I don't necessarily feel comfortable letting the people who made the decision over the past, you know, years with, you know, our, our Chief Scrotto. I don't necessarily feel comfortable letting them make the decision again. You know, and so I want to make sure that you're going to be a part of that. And I want to know, and I want to know what you see, how you're going to break up this Boys Club, this little Good Old Boys Club, and truly make this a Bureau that's reflective of everyone in the Bureau. And because I think what I see happening with every time there's a new mayor, or a new, and then we could be a new one again. And so this person could be here for just a short time, because there's an election in May. And so we're going to pick a, pick a chief, or an Acting Chief, with an election coming up, and and I don't know anybody who's going to take that position, knowing that there could be a change. So for me, I I want to know, how do you bring together the people that have, that, for every mayor, as I mentioned, there's been a division between the Bureau. How are you going to try to finally unite this Bureau? Do you have any ideas?
Well, I will be part of the process for sure. I talked to Councilman Colquitt about this yesterday, I also think.
I think if not, we restructure it, I'm telling you, but go ahead.
We need to make sure we get the right people in place. And typically, that's through having, as you stated, Good Old Boys Club. There's multiple clubs, any large organization, any organization has different groups of people within it.
Yeah, right.
I think making sure there's people from each of those groups within the Command Staff can make a difference. I think we have some of that now, but we could probably do a little better with it. I think the other thing that I have seen, and President Schwarzwald mentioned this a little earlier, is we have instability amongst the Chief. Because I, to my knowledge, there's not been a Chief that made it through any administration change, which means when someone's trying to ride out or play a Game of Thrones situations, they believe they just have to wait until this next mayor comes and somebody else is going to be in, and then it switches from one group to the next and back and forth. So at some point, I think, and other cities have done this, I think there needs to be conversations about a contract to ensure more stability, to make sure, A, there's more accountability on the Chiefs that is in existence, but also they feel a little more secure that they're not going to just get changed out when a mayoral elect- electorate changes, or with political swings, whatever might happen. There's a lot of instability at that position, it's a very vulnerable position. Luckily, we've had some really great people willing to step up into that position, but the instability of that filters its way down through the ranks, and I do believe, as President Schwarzwald stated, a contract is something that we should have a serious discussion about, what that would look like, how that would help bring some stability to the Bureau.
Yeah, as long as Counsel gets to see it first.
Well, any, any contract Counsel has to agree to, so.
And so, but I I do also want to say that I think the one thing that's frustrating to me is, I hear repeatedly how we're going to do so much better with commute, police community relations. I actually think it's worse than it ever has been, only because we don't have enough officers to do what we used to do. And, I mean, we had some really amazing people doing police community relation stuff. We had the, and we don't have the cycles anymore, we don't have those people doing those. I mean, I tell people this all the time, I was telling Councilwoman Moore. Christmas time, Commander Ripple had a line of kids. Santa Claus had nobody. So that tells me he was doing something right to build relationships in Sheridan with the kids, who cat, stood in line waiting for him. But those motorcycles are now gone because of whatever reason happened with an escort or whatever, he decided to do away with them. So we don't have those, we don't have Tiffany Costa, who, she knew a lot of people, and and I didn't always agree with what she did, but in how she did it, but she, she worked with a very diverse group of of people across the city. And a lot of people love her, you know, when she was gone, a lot of them were upset. So I think that, you know, and you look at Mike Gay, and he was one of the best, I mean, he, with the Garfield Gators, I mean, that's how I first met him, was working with the Garfield Gators. So you have, you lost people like that on the streets. And you keep talking about building police community relationships, but really, you destroyed a lot of them. So I'd like to see how we're going to try to rebuild this in a way that is making the public feel part of the process, and making the officers across the board feel part of the process. But I don't know how you do that with such short numbers. And I think, I'd like to know that you're going to do more to encourage people to apply. Similarly, to the police, to the Fire Bureau, I just heard that there were some girls that took part of a class with, I'm going to bring this up just real briefly, with Lisa Epps from the, from the Fire Bureau. And I think one or two of the girls didn't pass the physical, one was sick, whatever. But what are we doing to help bring those girls on board? Because Lisa Epps is the only black female on the Bureau. It's like, we can't do anything to try to encourage that, so I just wish people would take a look at that stuff. That's all. But for this part, I'm going to tell you that I'm going to be very, very much with you, engaged in this part. If we are not, I'm ready to do whatever we have to do publicly to make sure that the public understands what Counsel's role is and what we need to do. And if we're not doing it, they'll know. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Did you both have follow up, Councilman Charlie?
Yeah, so I think as we we talk about how we're going to go moving forward here, Director Pollock, you started to explain this. How is the absentee notification, or the out of office notification supposed to work?
A letter is for for all Directors who are going to be absent from the city. A letter is sent to, it's by code, it's required to go to the Controller, primarily, and Counsel, I believe the Clerk's Office has copied on that communication. Notice, notifying, again, the the reason for it in law is notifying the Controller that the Director will be absent, and that a particular individual within the department is authorized to conduct business on behalf of the department during their absence. So so it's either a Deputy Director, or if, in some departments have Deputy Directors, others have, don't have a Deputy Director, and then it would be selecting one of multiple Assistant Directors. So when Chief Scrotto has been absent from the city, those letters have been sent, naming one of the Assistant Chiefs to be the Acting Chief during his absence. More often than not, that has been Assistant Chief Ragland, but there have been instances where others of the Assistant Chiefs have been the ones selected.
So I'm looking through, we were not notified of Chief Scrotto's absence on October thirteenth. There is a letter that comes the following week, that the Chief is going to be out for the rest, the next week, and Assistant Chief Divine, I believe, was acting, but there was no notification on October thirteenth, when he was refitting.
Okay, I can, we can, I can look at that. Those are generated by the Bureau, so I don't have an answer for you on the, immediately on that question.
I mean, I think it's it's important, especially as we're we're talking now with an Acting Chief, that at some point, you will go on a vacation, even if only for a weekend.
I would hope.
You know, that you'll be notifying Counsel, is that, will that be the plan? That the Acting Chief will will let us know when?
That that was the practice during, at that time, Acting Chief Stan Grecky's period, as serving as Acting Chief, when he was absent from the city for any number of reasons. He named one of the Assistant Chiefs as the Acting Chief in his absence in the same fashion, so yes.
So how, you know, because that, you know, I I can point to certain times where that hasn't happened. How was Counsel, were the public supposed to have faith that this system is going to work?
I don't, I mean, I I I hear you on the example that you've raised. And I'll happily look into if that happened, if if a letter was sent, but only sent to the Controller by mistake, or if some other thing, some other, some other thing prevented the formal notification from being processed as it was supposed to be. The purpose of those letters is to identify chain of command. In most cases with, you know, non-public safety departments, that's really primarily around signatures, frankly. Because in every other instance, the, you know, the normal functioning of the department can happen with someone absent for a few days through the exist, the other, the normal command structure. With the Police Bureau, it obviously, in the presence of a Deputy Chief, that command structure is still clear, because there's only one Deputy Chief. When there is no Deputy Chief, and it's one of multiple Assistant Chiefs acting in that capacity, it's more important to establish who has operational control. Again, I I'm not, I'm not aware, sitting here right now, of instances where that has never, has not been clear, but I take your point, I do agree that it's a serious and important point, and we will happily look, look into the instance you've identified, or any other you'd like to raise, where we can confirm the circumstances around that.
Yeah, I think it is a serious, a serious issue here. Leads me to another question that's very important. Is the the mayor in town today?
Yes.
Okay, you refer to yourself as Deputy Mayor, and by the Home Rule Charter, you can only refer to yourself as Deputy Mayor when the mayor is out of town. And in every other administration, we receive notification when the mayor is out of town, and who is acting to sign their signature. So we have not received one of those from Mayor Ganey. And there are times when I'm, you know, are you in charge, is he in charge, who's in town, who's not?
So there have been, th- this is a topic of which the city has had multiple permutations. During the Murphy Administration, there were two people who held the title Deputy Mayor on a daily basis for the entirety of the administration. So respectfully, the the Charter is clear on when the title is used to, for someone who's exercising the powers of the mayor during the mayor's absence. And there is documentation on file regarding that in, within the Clerk's Office. I understand the difference in practice between the way this administration has chosen to operate, and the two previous administrations, the administration prior to that. Again, I've had two, which is further inconsistent with the wording of the Charter. If you take it to mean that the title cannot be used outside of those instances of absences, I I don't believe that that, that's not our interpretation, not the way we've proceeded.
I mean, I think the the Charter's pretty clear on that. But again, you know, there there was an incident earlier this year where both you and Mayor Ganey were out of town, and we had no notification of who was authorized to execute.
That there, in every instance where the mayor and I are both out of town, there's been a letter, I I think in every instance, naming Director Schmidt to be the Deputy Mayor for the purposes of, of exercising the mayor's authority, there's been.
Who gets that letter?
The same, the same list of individuals who get the other absence letters.
So, I mean, I've never, I've never received one. So are we saying, assuming the issues with the Clerk's Office?
Again, I'm happy to look into that, I know they are, they are transmitted.
Can I, can I just, it's sent to the Clerk's Office and Counsel President usually? And our clerk before had always sent them on to Counsel.
We get, from the Clerk's Office, we get, if Director Schmidt is out of town, we'll get, or any other Director, we do receive those. We just don't receive them.
I can't speak to that.
From the, from the top.
I I can't speak to that, they are, they are sent in instances, they're sent in instances where I am absent and the mayor is not, naming someone else Acting Director of O M B, that's always Chief Financial Officer Patrick Cornell.
In fact, actually, you send them yourself. That, that is right, I I will see that Chief Cornell, or Chief Cornell is the, in charge of of your department, we just don't receive them from the mayor's office.
I I can't answer that question for you, sitting here right now, I know they are created, I know they are filed.
Okay, I mean, again, in helping restore trust, that would be nice to, you know, if you could look through and find some of those that.
Sure.
Have been sent.
And again, I.
Love to see that.
What I, what I cannot, I do just want to be clear, in, from the point of view of, of understanding, that I do want to understand why you are seeing some of them and not all of them. They may be being sent to, you know, different individuals, who are sending them, maybe using different distribution lists, some of which may directly send them to Counsel members, and some may not. I'm not sure, because I have not looked at that. I do know they are created, I see all of them. And I'm confident that they're being generated, but if there's a, if there's a transmission issue that we can correct or clarify, happy to do that.
I, I really do think that we need to start having more of these conversations under oath here. I want to talk about the morale of the department. So I was in Zone Three Friday when the news broke. Officers are not happy. The, you know, the the general view from the officers were that we feel duped, of course, this is what he, what he was going to do. What can we do to restore that, that trust in these officers? We can't afford to lose anymore.
So like I said earlier, I think we were all a little surprised. I think that Chief did things for, you know, his reasons, and, you know, right now, moving forward, reiterate that the mission is always the mission. I think the goals that we, that he had set forth, very similar to the goals that I have, and and that I will, like, continue with moving forward. Violent crimes, bringing that down. Recruitment, retention, officer wellness. Those are all the things that I believe, and those are all the things that they bought into. And so that mission stays the same.
And, but the officer's morale, that, is that?
So I think on that front, and I may have alluded to a little bit earlier, we need to do a better job of recognizing, you know, good work in the moment. And, you know, that'll be a commitment.
The Chief Scrotto was working on a couple major initiatives. The one, you know, one was the nine-one-one call center, changing what is being responded to in terms of active, you know, sorry. Investigations are, I guess, crimes in progress, I think is the terms that, that you used. Is that going to continue?
Absolutely, in fact, I think about forty-eight percent of our incident reports are taken by that telephone reporting unit. That telephone reporting unit, I think, has eight, like, like permanent members, and then we kind of have utilized some people that are, you know, on light duty to supplement that. But if, it would be my desire to supplement that. We also have, just around the corner, a online reporting tool. So some of the reports that, you know, individuals take, that doesn't, you know, set a criteria that we, I'm happy to share and and talk over with the Counsel here. But individuals and residents can, you know, file a police report on, online, without having an officer, which that does is, is it frees up officers to, you know, be in the neighborhood. And as I've said earlier, the Pittsburgh Cares Initiative is the initiative that, you know, assigns officers to certain neighborhoods, lets the residents know them. The expectation for me would be that they also attend community meetings, that if I go into a business in that neighborhood, and I, and it's a, you know, mom and pop shop, and I say, hey, who's the officer assigned? I I expect them to be able to tell me who that is, and if it isn't, then that's a problem for the officer. And that's a relationship that they need to build.
I I very much appreciate the Pittsburgh Cares model, and I think, you know, one of the things that we all hear constantly is about how we want to see more officers walking the beat, and more officers around, and I think until, until we can get to the point where we're staffed appropriately, we, you know, are going to have to find ways to make that work. And I think the Pittsburgh Cares model has been very effective in my zone. I know that I have, my Commander is, is very bought into the system. And also, I want to take a moment to acknowledge, Commander Abraham is one of the best individuals I've ever worked with.
Ditto, and Ripple.
And I, you know, very much appreciate that. But one of the other initiatives that the the Chief was talking about is moving from parking complaints, getting the parking authority to start enforcing those. Can you tell us about where you might be on that?
I couldn't answer that right now. I know that that was something that was on his agenda to do. And like, that's something that I would welcome, having a conversation with, with the Parking Authority, to kind of, you know, move in that direction.
Any, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I can add, we, we have had some discussions with Parking Authority Administration around what that would look like, how those calls would get dispatched, what times, you know, Parking Authority only staffs, you know, in limited hours.
Correct.
Limited times. They're also in the process, they're also having severe staffing issues, those sorts of things. So there's a lot of discussion that has occurred. We still don't have a timeline for implementation. There's obviously multiple unions involved, including the FOP sitting next to me here. So there, there has to be discussion about what that looks like, what happens if it's a. so there, there has to be discussion about what that looks like, what happens if it's a, if the call, you know, turns out to be a parking dispute, rather than just a parking complaint, those sorts of things, we want to make sure everyone's safe, and all resources are being utilized as well as possible. So, the intent behind this would be essentially do a pilot, probably in downtown or Oakland, which are key core areas where we get the most complaints, and then roll it out from there.
Have you had those conversations with the Parking Authority?
Yes, myself, Mr. Honorado.
Told you hadn't, I was told that no one had reached out to the Parking Authority yet.
I've had multiple meetings with Dave Honorado and Matt. I can even show them on my calendar that we had meetings about it, so.
Okay. The other, you know, many initiatives that the chief was working on, the other one that I think got the most attention was the overnight zones, or the, the combined zone overnight. Is that something you're going to plan to keep using?
So currently, we've already finished our bid assignments, those get selected around October first, and so, like, they are on the schedule for next year. The same, same model that we used this year. That was done prior to, you know, Chief retiring.
Well, I mean, that's, you know, that's interesting, I would say that's probably one of the things that we've received the most feedback from. I cannot tell you how many community meetings I had to go to and talk back, or, you know, walk back what was said, because so many individuals believe that there are no police between 3:00 AM and 7:00 AM, and I know that that's not true. But I do think that it's, it's not a failure of the Police Department, it's a failure of our communications with the press to not be able to walk that back, and when I brought that up, that, that this is, there's, seems to be a pride, or something that is stopping the administration from having that conversation again with the media, and explaining that we still have officers between 3:00 AM and 7:00 AM. And I've heard, well, the media just, you know, it's, it's on the media, they need to figure that out. And will we be taking that same kind of approach with the media moving forward? Because that is where people, you know, get their news, and where they understand that, I mean, they, the media reported that we will not have officers between 3:00 and 7:00, and no one from the comms team took the time to say that's not true.
Well, I assure you, we have officers between 3:00 and 7:00.
I, I know that.
And, and some of the other council people here and I, like, we've had relationships, and they probably can attest to, you know, my reputation. I'm kind of a squared away, straight shooter, like, tell it like it is, kind of individual, and I'm happy to, you know, be as transparent as possible with, you know, how we deploy, and, you know, what we, our resources currently are. And so I don't ever run from those conversations, and in fact, I welcome them.
I'll just say, maybe to that point, the place where I saw us be the most effective, because, because we, we do, we, we call, and we say, hey, that's not quite right, and I think the P I Os do that, I think we actually spend a lot of time trying to help get the information right, but where the places where I saw it land best with people, who maybe they read the paper, or maybe they read the paper, but they don't read the correction, or whatever, is actually when the officers go to the community meetings and explain it at length and take the questions. So I've seen, I saw Chief Scarrato actually do a very, very good job at that at a massive Northside meeting, I've seen, you know, Chief Ragland do it. I, I think if we want people to understand that, we should really probably make a concerted effort to move, you know, members of the command staff around to have that conversation with people, because I think it's partly message, and I think it's partly messenger, and I think people believe it most when they hear it from the people who are running the Bureau. And I would like people to understand that better, and, and we have worked hard to try to make people understand that better, because it's important.
What, what percentage of members in a neighborhood do you think attend community meetings?
I don't, I don't, I don't know, I just know we should try all of the avenues, because I think we manage to get to, you know, some, some listeners are paying attention to the news, some listeners are paying attention to the news, all the way through the stories, including the correction, some people are going to meetings, some people are, I mean, I think we'd be happy to explore all the avenues, because it's my belief that the, the, you know, shifts that we're making are actually resulting in a more effective force, it's resulting in a force that, that is more where the crime is, when the crime is, that is relieving people of administrative, officers of administrative duties that they don't need to have by civilianizing it so that we're doing what people want. And, and when I've seen that laid out, you know, person to person, that's where I see people get it. So if, you know, if we need to have a special community meeting, should we have a town hall? I, I am agreeing with you, I want people to understand that, and I'm not sure we have yet broken through to all of the people who continue to have concerns.
Yeah, I mean, I just, there's, clearly, 24 and 11 have much broader reach than community meetings, when you consider how many people believe that we were not having police between 3:00 and 7:00. And for me, it's, you know, it's, it comes down to a pride thing, that, you know, I think we have all those communication staffers, and why they're not communicating with the media on that, you know-
Which come out of the budget.
That's not, it's, it's not the case that they're not communicating with the media on that topic. I, I agree with you that the coverage has not been clear.
Find me the revision, the, the clarification of we do have police on there, it, it never happened.
Yeah, I, again, I don't dispute that, but that doesn't mean that we didn't respond and attempt to correct the record, they didn't air it, that, that's not the same thing.
I, I'm sorry, I just don't believe you on that. Yeah, all right, that's, I, I want to make sure that we get in a good place moving forward here, I'm very concerned about our crime statistics, I'm very concerned about the increase in violent crimes that are not murders, the increase in break-ins, and I, you know, we've got a lot of work to do here, and, and there's a lot of trust that needs to be rebuilt, and I cannot reiterate that enough. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Charlin. Councilman Work, did you have something?
I just wanted to clarify, is there a deputy chief position or not now?
No.
Can you say, no?
Or is not, the organization of the Bureau, as it was when you approved this year's budget last year, and it will remain the same.
And then, and then, are we, you're going to schedule an interview with whoever, whomever's appointed, correct?
Well, I guess we'll have to coordinate with the administration.
We have to ask solicitor with the processes from here.
It's up to the administration, I would think, but, you know, expect to be fully informed.
Whatever is council's pleasure, as relates to the co-provisions regarding interviews for, you know, for, in term of, for appointments below the chief level, we will work with you on. I just, to Director Schmidt's point, we have not established any new positions to which anyone has been named. We laid out a, a plan that we were going to advance in the budget that would reestablish the position of deputy chief, but with Chief Scarrato's retirement, that's no longer necessary. So it is our intention for Assistant Chief Ragland to be acting as chief in a manner consistent with the normal procedure when there, a chief is absent. I, I don't want to speak for-
Excuse me. Solicitor Freedson, could you please come to the table? Just briefly, what the next process would be, if we don't have a deputy chief, what happens with an acting chief position is what I want to know. Nothing, right? We don't have any, we don't have to interview? We could fire?
Introduce yourself, can you?
Please forgive me, Councilwoman Gross, for sitting in your chair, there are only so many chairs. Dan Freedson, Solicitor to City Council. So you're, you're correct in your instinct, which is there's an acting chief is the next role here, and they can start immediately, but they do have to come to a council meeting within ninety days.
Same for an acting chief?
That is the acting chief, yeah, that's the acting chief standard, and for approval, interview.
Okay. And can an acting chief have the same authority, like, as a chief, like, to hire, fire, all that kind of stuff?
Yeah, while acting, yes. Which is different than interim chief, or different than, you know, the way the Home Rule Charter contemplates a deputy director, or a deputy mayor, is really interim is the correct understanding from the Home Rule Charter, which is, it's a temporary thing because somebody is sick, or absent, or otherwise incapacitated, so what we have here in, in Acting Chief Ragland is an acting chief.
Thank you, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
I'll just point one clarification, the acting chief, even the chief themselves, do not have the ability to hire or fire within the department, that is solely on the department director.
Okay, thank you for clarification, thank you. I might want to be a director. Just kidding.
You are, you're already. Then you're here, you're staying on council for another four years.
I already have my plans.
Are you finished?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Work, did you have something to follow up?
Yeah, so just kind of circling back to this community policing concept of officers in the community, you know, stopping into the businesses, getting to know community leaders, stopping in after-school programs, getting to know the youth in and around the community, not when things are going poorly, but just in general. I believe that we do have enough officers to do this, again, ninety neighborhoods, six-hundred-and-fifty-four able-bodied officers, those numbers pan out, right? That's, that seems doable to me. If you, yeah, please, go ahead.
So just one point of clarification, that's six-fifty-four. That's sergeants, that's lieutenants, those are detectives, those are people that work in training, those are people that work in other jobs, internal affairs, things like that, so that's six-fifty-four encompasses all of that. So what we're saying is that they're healthy and able to, you know, they're, they're part of the robust police force, but they all have very, very specific duties. So unless you want lieutenants and sergeants walking beats and knocking on doors, and detectives walking beats from knocking on doors, you might want to look at those numbers and really look at them, because in the, the true two-hundred-and-eighty-eight is the patrol force. So the patrol force is two-eighty-eight-
Two-eighty-eight.
Right now, and then, then, and then it's supported by additional sergeants and K-9 officers, but two-eighty-eight is patrol. And then you have to add in it the loss factors, days off, vacations, and all those things, so I just want that number to be very clear.
Okay, so even if we bring it down to two-eighty-eight on the patrol force, again, we have ninety neighborhoods, some of these neighborhoods are tiny, and they don't actually need three officers, right? One, two, I mean, I don't know, right? That would be, what, ninety times three, two, seven, that would be three officers per neighborhood, would be two-hundred-and-seventy, and that would be more than you would, right? Like, that would be three shifts, I would assume that would cover vacation, so I feel like this is doable, right? The question, and I actually posed this to you, Officer Schwartzwalder, do you believe in this model?
So I believe in any model in which the, the men and women of the Bureau of Police, the rank and file, are not overcommitted and under-resourced. So what I'm talking about is, when we begin to expand these commitments, want versus need, that's where we begin to run into a problem. So we can want many things, but what do we really need? And we need to establish as the Bureau of Police, that's the right size of the Bureau, and what the mission is, and then we fund it, we man it, we train it, we staff it, et cetera, under those auspices. So if that's your model, and that's the model that the city wants, then you have to be prepared to then say, other wants are no longer what the city resident gets, because everything has the doctrine of unintended consequences. So if it's officers walking beats, other things may have to be dismissed under those circumstances. Maybe other people at this table won't tell you that, but I will. So as long as you understand that, we're, we're very committed, just tell us the mission, we'll do it.
Well, so, I mean, I feel like you're sort of implying something without actually saying, so what, what do you, I mean, I'm curious, what do you feel, why do you feel that if we have two-hundred-and-eighty-eight patrol officers, okay, I'll bring it down, let's say there's one assigned per neighborhood, one officer, so that's ninety officers, and sometimes they're on vacation, they can't always be there, right, this kind of thing, you know, date, but just generally, like, one full-time position dedicated to each of the ninety neighborhoods. You know, and obviously, they'd be answering calls and doing whatnot in the neighborhood, but when they weren't answering calls, right, when they weren't answering urgent calls, which are the calls we answer now, that they spend the rest of their, I don't know what a shift is, eight, eight hours, ten-hour shift, that they spend the rest of that ten hours stopping, doing all these things, right, in and around the community, including, you know, traffic enforcement, spot traffic enforcement as needed.
Well, again, your four-ten shift is, is an interesting idea, because the way that the hours of work operate, and so on, and you, you need to be, you need to understand how that will be staffed that way, because with four-tens, you're flipping, and I don't want to get into the weeds here, maybe this is a discussion for offline, but the men and women of Bureau of Police will do what the mission demands. So the question that me comes is, what is the mission, if it's going to be, as you point out, hey, I want ninety cops in ninety beat areas, okay, so on days you have big events, those big events aren't going to be staffed, because when it's all-
Well, so, okay, okay, okay. I feel like you are sort of taking, obviously, if there's a big event, right, and we need officers to do that big event, then they're going to come out of the neighborhood and go do that event, but I'm talking generally, on most days, on most days of the week, ninety officers, so that's my question, is are you behind the concept?
It's irrelevant, what I think is a union leader.
But it does absolutely one-thousand percent not irrelevant, because you are a leader of this Bureau, whether you are the union leader, or you're the chief of police, you are leadership, the rank and file look to you for inspiration, they look to you, and other commit, to, to say, hey, you know, this is good, this is bad. So that's why I'm asking, if you believe in this, in this concept of officers, patrol officers, and I understand we have specialties and folks are doing, right, like, but, but you, you just said, so we have two-hundred-and-eighty-eight, if the, the core function of those officers of their general day-to-day, excluding events, excluding special circumstances, should be out in their cars, or on the ground, whether they're on cycles, or walking, whatever, they're, you know, when they are not responding to an urgent call in the moment, if it is to be in the community, and spend their day kind of getting to know that community, and again, I'm, you know, I'm always including this traffic enforcement stuff, because that is what people want to see. That's what people want, that's what the taxpayers want from the force.
Right, so you're the strategist, so, so you, City Council, the mayor, and Police Command Staff are the strategists. The police officers, the men and women that are rank and file, detectives, patrol officers, et cetera, are the, are the tactical level, or the everyday carrying out level. So whatever you say the mission is, if you're asking me as a union president, I don't care what the strategy is, as long as you do so within the confines of the CBA. So whatever you want to develop as the, as a strategy, please don't misunderstand, I don't care about the strategy. I'm not, I don't represent the city of Pittsburgh, I represent the men and women that police the city of Pittsburgh. So that's what I represent. So as a city, it is under oath, I swear, and as a city resident myself. So what I, my leadership role is to make sure that that CBA, that collective bargaining agreement, and how the men and women are treated while they're operating, that's my job to make sure we follow that. Whatever the strategy is, that's well beyond my pay grade.
Well, it's, it is beyond, it may be beyond your pay grade, but it, it is within your, I mean, it's something you comment on, right? I mean, do, do you not comment, I mean, are you not commenting here, sort of implying that it's, do you think it's possible or not, with this two-hundred-and-eighty-eight patrol officers?
I, I don't have the faith right now in, based on the numbers, and how I've watched a department being led over the last three or four years, I, I don't have that faith, no.
So, what can we do to get you there? Because we need you on board with this, because, again, I know you don't represent the people, you represent the officers, but this is what the people want the officers to be doing, and we need to inspire the officers to do this, because that's, you know, that's the job. And it, and, and that's what they signed up to do, I assume, right?
Correct. So figure out your resources, are you under, are you overcommitted or under-resourced or not, and then figure out how to resource it the way, the mission that you want. I mean, everybody does this, this is nothing new, you worked in private business before you were, you know, a government official, resources are finite, so we have to figure out, okay, if this is where we want to use our resources, money, effort, et cetera, that's our mission focus, that's what we're going to staff, train, fund, and demand. So when you do that, alls I'm saying is, is you tell me the mission, I'll look at it as it affects the CBA, and as, if, if it complies with the CBA, and the command staff will tell you this, so will the director, none of my business. When they called me about Chief Scarrato, and wanted me to go over the news on Friday- When they called me about Chief Scrotto and wanted me to go over the news on Friday, I didn't say a word. Because when the media was calling me, what did I say? None of my business. It's not a union issue. It's an administrative issue, not an FOP issue about Chief Scrotto's exit.
Okay, well, so, all right, so I'll take that to assume that you, well, are tentatively on board with this concept, assuming that it can be executed in a way that aligns with the CBA.
All right, as long as it aligns, great. I agree with you. Land with the CBA, I'm good.
So I'm going to sort of shift here, because I can't, I mean, I can't, like, you know, in the past two years, there have been two kids, little kids killed on their bikes. I had a kid almost killed in Greenfield. Just someone was just killed last week. There was another woman almost killed. I mean, these pedestrian deaths, cyclist deaths, I can't even keep track of them anymore, right? These drivers are out of control. So in terms of violent crime, I feel like we should be adding crashes to the violent crime list, for sure.
You are where you only have 13 cycles left, right?
I, I'm not sure why it has to be a cycle, but I don't want to get into, I don't understand what that's-
Well, I mean, if you're talking about specific traffic enforcement, that's generally what they do, so.
I mean, I've been pulled over by cars.
Right, and you will. But I'm just letting you know, if you want a specific, someone that was assigned to do that.
But I don't, see, this is my thing, is I don't necessarily see why someone has to be specifically assigned to that. That seems, it should just be like a general thing that-
Fair enough.
Everyone knows how to do. Again, I don't want to oversimplify. I'm not the expert. So, okay, moving on, just in terms of, because again, this issue of morale, because it's important. And I think that Councilwoman Charlin and Councilwoman Smith are right, that the morale isn't there. But I wonder if part of that, and again, this is just speculation, because I'm not, you know, in the thick of it, as the administration, whether it's, you know, leadership with Chief Scrotto or yourself, or the mayor, or whoever, have we ever had what I would call like an all-hands call or a listening session with, well, first of all, have we ever had like listening sessions with the rank and file? Like with the entire zone, like everyone there, just free to kind of talk freely?
Yes.
How often do we do that?
I think the last one that Chief did was a town hall that was hosted on June 19th.
Okay.
It was a virtual town hall.
It was a virtual town hall. Was it required that folks attend?
It was not.
It was not? Okay. Did you have, yeah?
I was going to say, we've also, myself and the mayor have gone to roll calls.
Roll, okay.
I know the chief had gone to a number of them. Commanders are obviously at most of them. But we do intend to continue, especially with this change, likely go back to myself and Acting Chief Ragland going around to the zones once again to listen to the officers, hear them. It is difficult. Our officers do great work every day. As I stated in one of my quotes on Friday, the Bureau is not just one person. I believe it's the officers, from the officers up, not from the chief down, they're doing the work. As far as our crimes, I know there's still issues with crime. It's not going away. It hasn't gone away. But we have significantly, not just the homicides, but our non-fatal shootings, which is probably more of a marker, are down 33%. I mean, I think you all can understand the only difference between a non-fatal shooting and a homicide is-
Very little, right.
Middle, yeah, it's very minor. So those are down 33%, which is great work. Again, I think that reflects the work the officers and detectives do every day, engaging with the community, being out there. So as we continue to grow and develop the Bureau recruitment, we have a class starting on Monday with 45 people. That's the highest number of classes, and to my knowledge, we've had in years.
How many classes have we had since, I don't know, say, two, three this year?
Three this year, yeah. 12, I think 12, 21, and 45.
Okay.
So I'll just make it easy for you. We've hired 38 and lost 173 since last year.
But if we can maintain this number, you know, 45 per class, and do three classes a year, that'll help us continue to fill. We do need, it's not just us. I mean, policing in general is not an attractive position for a lot of people. We need to continue to do that, through that. The recruitment strategy that the chief had originally laid out, I believe Commander Ragland has some ideas around that as well. We need to continue to do what we can to get people on board with policing. Fire, I think the reason we have a big difference this year is because this is the first time you did not have to live in the city to apply to become a firefighter. So we had a significant increase.
Do you want me to comment on that too?
No.
I'd love to comment on it.
Nonetheless, that is-
I'm still mad at him.
Beyond what we can accomplish here, so. But we need to continue to recruit, talk positive about our officers, because they do do great work and not bring them down constantly.
I will, just very briefly, if you don't mind, because you asked the question, Councilwoman Kell Smith, just note for the record, that was the result of an arbitrator's decision in the case of fire, not a policy decision by the administration to relax residency there, in the case of fire. That's just, that's not, that's just for the record for everyone.
You'd be fighting really hard. I was just kidding.
Yeah, so, okay, I mean, I guess I do, I will want to hear more, you know, when we, we'll have our budget hearings come, because I'd like to hear some specifics about how we're going to get folk, and also, because I know it's going to come up, also how, you know, in our new classes, we are ensuring that, you know, I mean, there's a reason that council put an end to stops related to taillights and, you know, expired plates and those kinds of, there's a reason for that, because there were, you know, there was-
It was their policy anyway.
Well, I mean, but there were inequities in enforcement, right? And obviously, those, that risk is always there, right? When you are starting to be out on the street, sort of more in the communities. And so how, what the plan is, along with doing this community policing, and also this type of traffic enforcement, that we are going to, you know, maintain equity and sort of professionalism and whatnot in all of that, which I think that we certainly can. I don't, I'm not worried about that. But anyway, I'm going to leave it at that. I, we're not there in terms of getting the rank and file on board. We're not there. So that, I will want to hear more about that, about what's kind of being done to get the word out and also get, you know, every commander on board and, you know, make the case for this, not just to the people, because the people know, the people want it, right? The people are, you know, want to have this happen, want to see this shift. You know, when we talk about our Vision Zero initiative, it is education, infrastructure, and enforcement. And that's, you know, and how we do that in a way that works for all of our neighborhoods and all of our communities. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Warwick. Councilwoman Kell Smith has-
I just want to mention real quick that the Public Safety did just put out their plans for the election day, you know, to keep people safe. So thank you for that. So maybe I'll give the communications people a little chance there. God bless you. I really, I don't have anything extra to add. I just wanted to make sure that I mentioned that.
Okay, well, let me just say in closing, first of all, I agree with you, Councilwoman Warwick. You know, when we talk about a body, a police officer in the business district, I know we can't dedicate somebody there all day or to every neighborhood. That's impossible. But in between shifts, in between calls, even if that police officer got out for 10 minutes and walked that business district, just the visibility, just to see their face, to see the police car, to see the badge, whether it's 15 minutes or half an hour, stay close to the car just in case you get called out. But, you know, I would love to see more presence in my business districts, and I know that Councilwoman Warwick would as well, so.
We all would.
Everybody, right? Who doesn't? So, and I just want to say again, thank you for letting us vent about the Scrotto situation. I will tell you, I think we were all kind of blindsided in that, if we're being honest, you know, each and every one of us. I don't think we expected him to choose that profession over the one that he committed to here. You can imagine Chief Ragland, how we felt, you know, at least these folks were tipped off a little bit, knowing of the conversations, but we had no clue of any conversations. So I want to say to the public, the sky is not falling. We have competent, great veterans and newcomers in the police force. Councilman Charlin remarked, and he's always talking about the progress in the South Side, and I know he's happy with that. And I think it's probably one of his fears is hecking away, but I have confidence that it won't. And I know you are, you know, again, just for the public, we have great commanders, great assistant chiefs. We've got Ragland here, we have Assistant Chief Morty Devine here. I know you mentioned Ray Ripple. You know, we have great commanders, Abraham, Sean Malloy for that matter.
Commander Vanansky.
We have a whole host of command staff that we can choose from. I look forward to whoever you put up for the chief. I don't know what that timeframe looks like. I ask just for continued communication with us, so we're not caught off guard. If the press calls me next week and says, did you hear someone says a chief, I'm going to be like, what? But anyway, I know that's your decision, but we still have to confirm. You know, we have to, go ahead, sure.
Can I just speak on that very briefly? No, to your point about wanting to understand clarity around that, no timeframe, no decisions either about who to name or even the process by which that would occur have been made yet internally by the administration. You know, until last Friday, we weren't aware that this was a choice we were confronting. And so certainly, I think it is the mayor's intention to proceed through Election Day and, you know, to the Councilwoman Kell Smith's point, the need for, you know, preparedness and vigilance around that before making any of those decisions, so.
Sure. No, I appreciate that. And I would like to have one-on-ones, whether it be with Director Schmidt or whomever. And besides the command staff and everybody I just mentioned, I will say, you know, Director Schmidt, he has his hands full with the Police Department alone, but people, I don't think the public realizes, he also lives after EMS, 750 firefighters, and all the issues and qualms that come with that. So I have complete confidence in his leadership. I've seen him, you know, deal with many people in many different situations. So again, we're all kind of blindsided by Scrotto. We'll move on from that. I hope we can put that chapter behind us and move on, find the right person, whether it be Chief Ragland or any of the others that were mentioned at the table here today. And again, I appreciate, you know, all of you being here and sitting here. It's been a long meeting, I know. I kind of knew it was going to turn out that way, so. Having exhausted, anybody else have anything to add before we go? Anybody? Okay. Having exhausted the business of his post agenda, go ahead. Did you say, did I hear something?
I just said thank you to the-
This meeting is adjourned.